Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing on governmental operations. At this time, we ask that you silence all electronic devices and at no time is anyone to approach the daisies. If you would like to sign up for in-person testimony or have any other questions during the hearing, please see one of the Sergeant-at-Arms. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Thank you so much to the Sergeant-at-Arms, and it's good to see you all. Good morning. My name is Lincoln Wrestler. I have the great privilege of being the Chair of the Committee of Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation, which is a very long name. I would like to welcome my colleague, not colleagues, colleague, David Carr, the great council member from Brooklyn and a little bit of Staten Island, for joining us today. And we have an all-star panel of administration officials, so really appreciate you being here as well. At today's hearing, our committee will be hearing several bills relating to increasing government efficiency and improving access to, improving public access to and utilization of city facilities. We will also be hearing pre-considered legislation that I am introducing to repeal the mayor's elected official agency engagement request form and clarify that the city charter fully empowers agencies to advise and assist elected officials without any prior approvals. Under the mayor's newly implemented system, city council members are being forced to fill out a form just to do our jobs. In order for elected officials to work with city agencies, to solve neighborhood problems, and address critical and emergent health and safety concerns, we must fill out forms so that the mayor's political operation can decide who they want to assist and why. As leaders elected by and representing the people of New York City, our most important responsibility is effectively serving our constituents. Since the mayor implemented this form in April, that work has become needlessly difficult and far more bureaucratic. My colleagues and I have received unclear and inconsistent responses from city agencies, police precincts, even city hall staff, as all of us are simply trying to ensure that our neighborhoods are safe and clean. We have been collectively hamstrung by a policy that undermines collaboration and coordination. I hope that this legislation, which already has the support of a veto-proof supermajority of council members, I'll just say that again, it has not been formally introduced, yet it already has a veto-proof supermajority of council members, I believe that's the first time in council history, will allow us to focus on constituents and navigate our city government in the way that it was intended. Well, by repealing this bill, we can work together to achieve solutions and improve conditions in our community. We're also going to be hearing 11 other introductions and a resolution. These bills address how the city is utilizing our public facilities and how we are ensuring New Yorkers can easily access and easily and equitably access government resources and navigate city bureaucracy. Two bills will help address the dire lack of public bathrooms in New York City. Intro 267, sponsored by Councilmember Rita Joseph, will require the city to make bathrooms in city government buildings available for public use. And Intro 694, sponsored by Councilmember Sandy Nurse, who has just joined us, will require the city to develop a long-term citywide bathroom strategy. Bathroom access is critically important as an accessibility issue, a disability justice issue, and a quality of life issue for every single New Yorker. My office recently received complaints regarding outdoor bathroom use on the streets and sidewalks of downtown Brooklyn, and I have too often seen it myself, so we created a new map of free public restrooms in the area and put it up on Link NYC kiosks and distributed to community stakeholders. But we need more bathrooms, especially more accessible bathrooms, and these bills will help set us on a path to achieving safe, clean, public bathroom access for all. We will also be hearing three bills relating to city buildings. Intro 162, sponsored by Councilmember Eric Dinowitz, who has joined us as well, will require the city to provide bicycle storage in city-owned buildings for city employees. Intro 563, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, who is notably late, she likes to give me a hard time, so I like to give it back, will require that water bottle filling stations in city buildings are accessible for use by the public. Intro 191, sponsored by Councilmember Gutierrez, who will be joining us shortly, will require DCAST to provide tenants of city leased property with two years' notice before expiration of their lease. We will be hearing three bills to improve 311 operations. Intro 587, again sponsored by Councilmember Dinowitz, will require 311 to conduct customer satisfaction surveys after agencies have closed cases. Intro 744, again sponsored by Councilmember Dinowitz, will prohibit agencies from automatically closing duplicate 311 requests. Intro 523, sponsored by Councilmember Brandon, will require 311 to develop a protocol for handling non-emergency calls about properties that are being harassed. Finally, we'll be hearing four other bills about improving government efficiency and efficacy. Intro 246, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, will require city agencies to provide an X option for gender on certain forms. Intro 478, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Wan, will require the city agencies translate and distribute federal and state documents relating to emergencies affecting New York City. And Intro 564, sponsored by Councilmember Brewer, will require the Department of Records to create a public archive of all official social media accounts and require agencies and elected officials to provide account information to Doris. And Reza 132, sponsored by Councilmember Menon, will call on the state legislature and the governor to grant residents of Roosevelt Island the power to vote for members of the Board of Roosevelt Island Operating Corporation, RIOC. We look forward to discussing all of these bills, and I'd like to thank our committee staff, Committee Council Jase Ray Canopathy and Erica Cohen, who do a great job for their work preparing for this hearing. I'd like to thank my communications director, Nib Mooney, who's a star, and I'd especially like to just take a moment to thank my chief of staff, Molly Haley, who does an absolutely extraordinary job and is the brainpower behind our office. So, thank you, Molly. I think we have a couple of members who are going to offer some brief introductory opening remarks. We can start with Councilmember Nurse, followed by Councilmember Joseph, and if Councilmember Dinowitz is so inspired, he can go after that.
Thank you, Chair Wrestler. I'll try to be brief. Thank you for convening this hearing and hearing a ton of bills. I have one next Friday with that, too. Public bathrooms are a fundamental part of any modern city's infrastructure, and when properly planned, they ensure that everyone has the right to fully participate in public life. Without sufficient access to public restrooms, we exclude entire groups of people from our shared spaces. In fact, New York City has not meaningfully increased its number of public bathrooms since the 1970s, and this ongoing policy failure disproportionately affects our most vulnerable populations: seniors, people with disabilities, pregnant individuals, families, our unhoused neighbors, people who are menstruating, and our workers, such as delivery workers, street vendors, and taxi drivers. This is not just about convenience, it is about human dignity, public health, and inclusion. With just about 1,100 public restrooms across the five boroughs, roughly one restroom for every 7,500 residents, give or take, New York City ranks 93rd out of the 100 largest U.S. cities in public bathroom availability. My bill, Intro 0694, aims to change that by creating a citywide network of public toilets and establishing a dynamic goal of one toilet per every 2,000 residents by 2035. This would nearly quadruple the number of public restrooms and position New York City as a national and global leader in public bathroom access. By incorporating public restrooms into our city's long-term planning processes, we ensure that as New York grows, access to public space grows with it. I do acknowledge the steps this administration is taking to improve bathroom access, like piloting prefabricated and modular designs. I recognize the Urin Luck initiative and the Google Map layer of all public restrooms. I'm still figuring out how to put it on my phone, but that should not represent everybody. We look forward to the New York City working group to expand access, and my district is currently piloting the Portland Lou in Irving Square Park, which we are thrilled about. It's under construction, and it looks like it's moving really quickly. So, we're just excited to talk about this, and I'm glad to be partnering with Councilmember Rita Joseph on this issue and the borough president, Manhattan Borough President, Mark Levine. Really, this is about how can we make it work? We know there are so many challenges, cost, citing, it's so challenging, but we got to make it work because we all got to go. So, I just want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Rita Joseph, as I said, Manhattan Borough President, my Legislative Director, Ryan Hickey, our outgoing Legislative Fellow, Latitia Dump, Vocal New York Coalition for the Homeless, AARP, Carol Gardens Nanny Association, Parks Little Parents, Street Vendors Project, Los Deliveristas, and many more who have worked tirelessly to push for these changes. I look forward to continuing this important conversation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Nurse, and to our other great bathroom justice champion, Councilmember Joseph.
Good morning. Thank you, Councilmember Wrestler, Chair Lincoln Wrestler, and members of the council. I'm thrilled to present my bill, Intro 267, which was introduced in partnership with Manhattan Borough President, Mark Levine. Intro 267 is one of my four bills aimed at addressing the bathroom accessibility issue in New York City. Through this legislation, we are asking the city to make certain bathrooms and city facilities available for public use. The bill requires that DCAST, in coordination with other agency heads, to allow public access to readily accessible bathrooms in public facing municipal buildings during business hours. It also mandates signage indicating location, hours, and accessibilities of these bathrooms for persons with disabilities. Additionally, the bill calls for implementation report periodic update to be submitted to the council, mayor, public advocate, and community boards. The locations of these bathrooms will be posted on a city website listing all public bathrooms included in a city land use listed maintained by DCAST. Access to clean and accessible bathrooms in New York City should not be a luxury. Too often, residents and visitors have to plead with business owners for bathroom access, sometimes being forced to make unnecessary purchases just to use the facilities. For our homeless population, finding clean, safe, and accessible bathroom is even a greater challenge. This bill will help address these injustices. By opening some city facility bathrooms to the public, we are showing New Yorkers and visitors that we care about their health and well-being. Access to clean and safe bathrooms is a matter of equity, public health, sanitation, and basic human rights, as Manhattan Borough President Mark Levine has emphasized. By considering this bill today, Chair Lincoln and committee members, you're doing your part. Let's get this passed quickly. New Yorkers and visitors have been waiting too long. It's time to do the right thing. Thank you to all the advocates, my council colleagues who co-sponsored this bill, and the staffers who worked diligently to bring this to this stage. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Joseph. We are joined by my friend and neighbor, Councilmember Shahana Hanif on Zoom, and Councilmember Gail Brewer, who did join us a little late, would like to make an opening statement as well.
Thank you very much. I've been at two meetings already today, so just want to let you know. I'm talking about Intro 563, which is expanding public access to drinking water. I bring this to your attention based on my friend who has passed, Richard Murphy. He was a Commissioner under Mayor Dickens, and he always said that every young person in New York, in schools in particular, should get a water bottle, and there should be water filling stations everywhere, because you cannot tell young people not to drink soda if there's no water available. Everyone has a right to free water, no matter where they are or what season it is. Drinking fountains are often inaccessible, even in the schools, and it's even harder to tell people, "Don't buy sugary drinks or single-use plastics if they can't access free water." Intro 563 would require the Department of Citywide Administrative Services to make water bottle filling stations open to the public in city buildings, fire stations, police stations, and so on. This bill is supported by the NRDC, Natural Resources Defense Council, the League of Contamination Voters, and Peggy Shepard and those wonderful folks in Harlem. They're not able to be here today, but they have submitted written testimony. I know this costs money, but not a lot, and I would think very hard about making sure that we have free water available. Right now, it's either in the place where you work, or whenever the Department of Environmental Protection harangues correctly, the fire hydrants and puts a station, but it's very far and few between. Intro 564, Government Social Media Archive, and I know that the Commissioner, wonderful Commissioner of Doris is here, social media posts and websites are official government records as defined by the city charter, and Doris, Department of Records, maintains a publicly accessible archive of official social media accounts used by city agencies. While some accounts, like @NYPDChiefofDepartment, are carried over from one administration to the next, others are unique to the individual who occupies the position, such as @NYPD DORITRY, CAS. Intro 564 would require city agencies to submit to Doris the names of all of their social media accounts, so that none are left out of the archive. It would also require certain elected officials to submit the names of their accounts to Doris, specifically the mayor, comptroller, public advocate, each borough president, and each member of the council. Doris has submitted testimony in support of this bill, and if they have any suggestions, they're all welcome. I want to say I'm a real advocate for archives in our city. I have to say, a lot of elected officials leave, I won't mention them, I have their list, and do not submit their papers. I have all my papers submitted from 22 years of being in the city council and borough president, and I do think that it is really important for our future to have quality archival material. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Brewer. I look forward to reviewing those papers one day.
Oh, please.
And now, Councilmember Dinowitz would like to make a brief opening statement as well.
Thank you, Chair Wrestler. It's great to be here at the GovOps hearing. Today, we are discussing three bills related to our quality of life here in New York City. I first want to thank Chair Wrestler and the members of the committee for hearing this legislation. I remember the first time a student, I was teaching in the public schools, and a student wanted to bike to school. It was a high school student, and I thought it was a great thing. Unfortunately for that student, in order for him to bike to school, I needed to meet him downstairs, and we needed to figure out a way to get his bicycle in to the building and then figure out a way for him to store that bicycle. Also, he could do what we want so many of our students to do, and that's bike to school. And that's not too different from so many municipal workers who just want a bike to work, but for the fact that they have no place to put their bicycle during the day. So, Intro 162, introduced in collaboration with Councilmember Marte, would require that certain city-owned buildings of at least 10,000 square feet or more in size would provide bicycle storage space for employees or visitors, providing so that our municipal workers and visitors could exercise that ability to have alternate means of transportation. And at a time when we are encouraging people to get out of their cars and use alternate modes of transportation, the city should be at the forefront of allowing them to do that. Introduction 744 would prohibit government agencies for closing out 311 service requests solely because they've been identified as duplicates of previous 311 requests. On my office, we often receive calls from several constituents impacted by the same issue, whether it's that same pothole, the party's going on in my district, the party's going on on Jerome Avenue, excessive noise. This bill aims to ensure that everyone can feel the confidence that our city agencies are listening to our community members, and 311 complaints should not be deleted because they're multiples. We want to understand that multiple complaints might mean that the issue has wide impact and needs earlier intervention by our agencies. And lastly, this is something I think so many New Yorkers have experienced. They've gone to the 311 app, they've complained about the pothole, they've complained about excessive noise, they complained about water fountains not working, trash, graffiti, only to look at their phone again and to see that the complaint was closed, not solved, not resolved, closed. This happens all the time. We get so many complaints about this. So, Introduction 587 would require the 311 Customer Service Center to conduct customer satisfaction surveys after each individual call is deemed closed, and to publish quarterly agency report cards illustrating the satisfaction and resolution rates of each agency along with the number of cases and the complaint type that each agency handles. We rely on 311. It is the portal through which our constituents get the government services they need and the quality of life that they deserve, and they should have the ability to provide feedback to the government agencies and feedback to the council, so we can provide proper oversight, so we can ensure that our city agencies are doing what they're supposed to do. The 311 Service Center is working the way it's supposed to, and all these combined will drastically improve the quality of life of our constituents and of New Yorkers. I want to once again thank Chair Wrestler and the members of the committee for the opportunity to speak about my bills and to hear the bills today, Introductions 162, 587, and 744, and for a chance to discuss together an area where we all agree that the creation of a more open and efficient city government for the constituents that we serve is of power mount importance in this city.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Dinowitz. Before the panel, I just do want to say we have two important birthdays today that I'd like to take a moment on the record to wish our Council Chief of Staff, Jeremy John, a very happy birthday, and Vocal New York is celebrating their 25th anniversary today, so I want to wish them a very happy birthday or anniversary as well. And now, we have what I think would be fair to describe as a star panel of government workers and leaders, so I just want to thank you each for being here today. We have Laura Ringelheim, the Executive Deputy Commissioner at DCAST, Ya Ting Lu, the inaugural Chief Public Realm Officer, Joe Morrisrow, Deputy Commissioner of NYC 311, who has led 311 for 18 years, Pauline Tool, the Commissioner of Doris, who has been in that role for a decade. I really want to thank each of you for being here today, but much more importantly, for the really great work you do on behalf of the people of New York City. At this time, I will call on our Committee Council to administer the affirmation, please.
Thank you, Chair Wrestler.
Oh, I didn't get Crystal. I just want to acknowledge Councilmember Crystal Hudson is with us as well. You're important. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Wrestler. Panelists, would you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Thank you. And before you begin, I would just like to remind the public that if you registered online to testify in person, please make sure to fill out a witness slip with the Sergeant-at-Arms. Thank you. You may begin.
Whoever would like to go first.
All right. Good morning, Chair Wrestler and members of the committee. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be with you today to share some of the work that we've done on public restrooms under this administration. My name is Ya Ting Lu. I am the Chief Public Realm Officer for the City of New York, and I just want to thank Councilmember Sandy Nurse and Councilmember Rita Joseph in particular for all of their tireless advocacy on the need and the importance of expanding public restroom access in the city, a policy goal and a value that we are really committed to and deeply share. As Chief Public Realm Officer, my role is to lead and coordinate internally across government agencies and with external partners to make sure that we have more vibrant public spaces throughout the cities. Three key areas that define our public space work, I summarize as hardware, software, and orgware. So, hardware is expanding the public space footprint that we have across five boroughs, especially in underserved communities with the least access to vibrant public spaces. Software is cutting red tape for partners, because city government alone can't help maintain, activate, and program these spaces. We really need partners from community groups to bids, but guess what? We don't always make it easy for that partnership, so we've been really focused on cutting that red tape. And then, orgware, which is all of the coordination and planning with agencies to make sure that we are delivering these policies and big capital projects on time, on budget. As Councilmember Sandy Nurse called out already, public restrooms are a central part of public health. It's a public health and equity issue, and access to restrooms is not a new issue in New York City. Similar to sort of the scaffolding issue, administrations in the past have tried to tackle this seemingly intractable concern for residents and visitors alike. And thanks again for the opportunity to share a little bit of what we have done to date to expand access and to create a more user-friendly experience. As announced by the mayor in June, the city recently launched Urin Luck, a new effort to expand access to public restrooms in all five boroughs. As part of this initiative, the city has made significant progress in restroom access. We have announced 82 new and refurbished restrooms in the next five years in the Parks Department pipeline, including 14 potential automated public toilets in the next two years. So, this New York City task force, interagency task force, we're really laser-focused on citing these 14 new APTs in our city streets, as well as ensuring that the suite of the public restrooms in the Parks Department portfolio are delivered on time, on budget. Parks has also recently completed the expansion of changing tables in all feasible public restrooms, three years ahead of schedule. We published this Google Map layer that identifies all public restrooms in parks, plazas, train terminals, libraries, privately-owned public spaces, to help people find the nearest restroom when they have to go when they're on the go. It already has 5.5 million views, and you can access this map at nyc.gov/rushrooms. And Councilmember Nurse, we would love to work with you to maybe go to Google and get them to just put this information automatically on the Google Maps to open it, as opposed to this layer, which I recognize is this sort of extra step that sometimes is difficult for people to access easily on their phone. And to help all of these different initiatives and projects stay on track, we lead this interagency task force to track the progress and to also explore other policy ideas for moving the needle, looking at what other cities have done, particularly in Europe, to expand public restroom access. This is a challenging endeavor. It's going to require the council's support and partnership. We support absolutely the intent of Intro 694 and just would love to have more detailed conversations with the council member, with the committee, with staff, on how we bridge the gap between the policy goals we all share and just the existing tools, processes, and resources that we currently have in place in sort of city government side among our agencies for implementation. So, Councilmember Nurse, you called out some of those constraints already in your remarks. I will try to go through these really quickly, but the four main constraints faced by city government today are citing. The citing challenges are real. We want more restrooms, but in a city as dense as New York and the public right-of-way, there's a lot of demands for that sidewalk space and that plaza space beyond the existing parks footprint. It's really challenging to find the locations and feasible locations. We, as an administration, are focused citing on restrooms in high-foot traffic areas and in areas that have less access to public restrooms. But the scoping, the approvals, the underground, as DDC Commissioner Tom Foley likes to say, the underground spaghetti, western spaghetti soup of utilities, those things all require intensive work, and we need your help to get through the community board and other types of approval process to cite these new locations. Existing restroom upgrades must be balanced with building new restrooms and maintaining the existing bathroom inventory. The Parks Department is carrying the largest stock of public restrooms in the city. This footprint is no small task to maintain. Parks recently received funding for a second shift cleaning to help maintain parks, including public restrooms, and if the restroom stock increases in their footprint, policy and legislation should account for additional resources to require to maintain those additional sites. Three, building public restrooms are cost and time-intensive. Parks restrooms right now cost about $5 million per restroom, take three to four years to build. The automatic public toilets take more than a year to move through a five-step approval process. Again, this administration has been really focused on the capital reform effort and trying to make efficiencies in the way city government builds capital projects that we think will help move the needle, but again, the existing way that we build restrooms and other infrastructure is quite labor and time-intensive. Lastly, we feel that city government alone cannot solve the public restroom access issue. Many other cities have found creative incentive programs. Munich and London are paying businesses to open up their restroom facilities to the public, and we just really welcome creative ways to collaborate and partner with the private sector as well to figure out how we can make the existing restroom facilities of the city across all types of buildings more available to the public. So, in conclusion, we are committed to working with you to identify acceptable sites for public restrooms in your districts, get your help to secure community buy-in, get your help in reforming the capital project delivery process. All of these steps together will help us deliver the resources that New York City residents and visitors alike deserve. We thank the council for the opportunity today to testify in our plans to expand public restroom access and really looking forward to working with you on figuring out how we operationalize and get the resources we need to really execute on these goals. I will now pass it to my colleague, Joe Marismo from OTI.
Appreciate that. Good morning, Chair Wrestler, and members of the City Council Committee on Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation. My name is Joe Morrisrow, and I am the Deputy Commissioner of New York City 311 under the Office of Technology and Innovation. Thank you for the opportunity to Thank you for the opportunity to testify today regarding legislation that would impact NYC 311 operations. As NYC 311's Deputy Commissioner, I oversee all aspects of 311, from the operation of the most familiar component, the call center, to the creation and implementation of multiple customer-facing channels, performance results and quality control measures, interaction with city agencies, and data collection. As you all know, NYC 311 delivers fast and easy access to government services and city information to all New Yorkers. NYC 311 is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, through multiple channels, including the call center, the online portal, text, mobile application, and social media. Originally launched as a call center, NYC 311 has evolved into the most comprehensive municipal government service platform in the nation. NYC 311 received 37 million customer contacts in 2023, and on an annual basis receives more calls than all U.S. City 311 call centers combined. I'm pleased to share that a recent independent report shows NYC 311 call center representatives achieved a customer satisfaction rating of 94%, placing us in the top 10% of similar services and even outperforming some private sector companies. This high level of public satisfaction reflects the dedication of the NYC 311 team to serving their fellow New Yorkers every day. It is important to note that 311 serves as the platform to provide information and services to the public. With few exceptions, public interactions with 311 services result in one of the following outcomes: an information request, a referral to an external entity, or a service request. We rely on our collaborative relationships with each city agency to build out the service request forms and information pages, which are also known as knowledge articles, that properly reflect the mission and services for each agency or office. If an agency makes a service request available to the public, there is a duty and expectation for the agency to be able to respond to it and provide a resolution within a reasonable service-level agreement, or SLA, timeframe. Once a service request is submitted with NYC 311, it becomes that agency's responsibility. The bills before the committee today all attempt to address issues that NYC 311 customers have with agency response. We'd be happy to hear from council members on ways we can work with individual agencies on how responses may be improved through the NYC 311 feedback loop with respect to specific problems that may not necessitate wholesale changes to how service requests are accepted, investigated, and resolved. I will now turn to the bills associated with this hearing. 523 would require 311 to stop referring non-emergency anonymous calls about harassed properties to agencies for follow-up. Harassed properties under this bill would be considered those that have been repeated anonymous complaints to 311 that cannot be substantiated or that are substantiated but not legal, excuse me, that are not illegal. As discussed above, 311 is simply the platform that other agencies use to provide information and facilitate service requests. 311 does not make determinations about whether repeat service requests are considered harassment, nor should we. If an agency accepts a service request type, the act of creating a service request results in a follow-up action. Repeated complaints against the same property that do not result in a summons or other enforcement action does not mean that an individual should be barred from making the complaint. Examples of difficulty to enforce service requests include noise complaints or illegal apartment reports. Importantly, this policy shift would be easy to abuse and could have unintended consequences. Next, Intro 587 would require 311 to conduct customer satisfaction surveys after each 311 call intake is closed and to publish agency report cards. We appreciate the city council's shared interest in this, and we feel that legislation is not needed since we are already working on such a survey. We will certainly keep council informed of its progress. And finally, Intro 744 would prohibit agencies from closing 311 requests for service complaints, for service or complaints solely because they have been identified as duplicates of previous 311 requests for services and complaints. Each agency may have a reason for why they may prefer not to have duplicate service requests, so a one-size-fits-all approach is not ideal. We'd like to hear from city council about what service requests have been closed for being duplicates and how we may be able to work with the agencies that have this policy. On behalf of the dedicated and hard-working team at 311, I thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I will now pass it on to Commissioner Tool from Doris for her testimony.
Thank you very much, Joe. Good morning. My name is Pauline Tool, and I serve as the Commissioner of the Department of Records and Information Services, known as Doris. Thank you to Chair Ressler and the members of the committee for the opportunity to talk today about the proposed local law to require elected officials and agencies to notify Doris of all social media accounts on an annual basis. This administration is committed to ensuring that government is open, accessible, and transparent, which enables meaningful engagement between residents of New York City and city government. Providing access to government records helps accomplish that goal. The proposed local law amends the city charter to require that Doris maintain a publicly-accessible and searchable online database of the official social media posts and websites of government officials. It also amends the administrative code to mandate that the city's elected officials and agencies provide Doris with a list of each official social media account annually. In essence, the proposal codifies our existing practice of harvesting and making available official social media posts and requires additional content. I testified on this legislation in the fall of 2023, and we do appreciate the council's focus on gathering and making available all city government's social media posts. It's important to understand that these posts will be useful for future researchers who want to document the zeitgeist of this particular time in our history. Social media posts are government records. Websites are official government records under the definition in the city charter. They have a permanent retention period, and because they were published online, they become part of the collection at the Municipal Library Division of Doris. Already, we have 31,783,698 records on our social media archive as of September 13th. This includes, though, the comments, mentions, direct messages, in addition to the posts made by official agency account holders, which number a little over 3 million. The vast majority of the posts in the archive are from Twitter, with close to 2 million of the posts, followed by Facebook. Our vendor harvests from nine platforms currently, which are listed in the testimony, but it also has content from platforms that are outmoded or less frequently used, such as Google Plus or Flickr. City agencies currently provide information to Doris, the name of the platform, the account, contact information for the person managing the account. And so when the name of a new account is added, the algorithm at our vendor will pull content from that account, even if it existed for years before we were made aware of its existence. In order to harvest the social media posts, the vendor requires certain information to make sure the posts aren't being harvested in an inappropriate way. So obtaining that information, which includes the name of the account, the platform, the contact person, et cetera, is really the most challenging part of having this social media archive. So I think our suggestion with this bill is that requiring only the name of the account will not allow us to harvest the content effectively, so we are suggesting an amendment to the legislation that would require information about social media accounts, official social media accounts, to be provided annually, as the bill requires, on a form designated by Doris, which would allow us to add other pieces of information as the vendor or new vendors require that in order to harvest things. And I think we could also stipulate that at a minimum, it would include the social media account name and contact person. And then, as previously confirmed at the November hearing, posting a link to our harvesting vendor site meets the goals of this bill. So we commend the council for its focus on records retention and preservation, and will take questions you may have in a minute, and I will now pass it over to Laura Ringelheim, Executive Deputy Commissioner of Internal Operations at the Department of Citywide Administrative Services.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Chair Ressler and members of the Committee on Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation. My name is Laura Ringelheim, Executive Deputy Commissioner of Internal Operations at the Department of Citywide Administrative Services, commonly known as DCAST. Across our agency, we work strategically to enact plans that support the management, maintenance, and operation of the city's real estate portfolio, including city-owned office and court buildings. I'd first like to begin by thanking you all for the opportunity to discuss this package of bills that will have an impact on municipal operations. DCAST remains committed to ensuring that we are increasing equity, access, and efficiency in all facets of city government. As such, we value the council's input and welcome discussions related to the proposed legislation being considered today. Regarding Introduction 162, this administration has a history of supporting policies that encourage New Yorkers to live healthier lifestyles and promote sustainability. In alignment with that goal, this bill would provide, would require that certain city-owned buildings of at least 10,000 square feet or more in size provide bicycle storage space for city employees or visitors. It's worth noting that for non-court facilities, DCAST has taken an existing bike policy available to any tenant that wishes to explore bike storage. We appreciate the council's interest in promoting such policies and recognize that by increasing bike storage, we are making it more practical for New Yorkers visiting city buildings to use bikes. DCAST welcomes a conversation with the council about the practical means by which this goal can be achieved. Additionally, we would also like to further engage in dialogue about DCAST's authority when it comes to managing city-owned properties and some of the limitations that can potentially impede our ability to enforce compliance. Regarding Introduction 191, as part of our role, DCAST manages the disposition of city-owned real estate for private use. We currently provide customary notification to our tenants of a lease's pending expiration in accordance with that agreement's terms. This proposed legislation would require DCAST to notify tenants of city-leased properties via email when their lease or rental agreement is set to expire in two years. At this time, we're seeking additional support from the Law Department to see if this would have any impact on the city's abilities to meet its obligation regarding the use of city properties. Regarding Introduction 267, so first and foremost, we know the lack of public restrooms throughout the city is a challenge that many New Yorkers and visitors to the city must constantly navigate. In service of helping to remedy this issue, this bill would require DCAST, in coordination with other city agencies, to allow members of the public to use readily-accessible bathrooms in public-facing areas of city-leased or owned buildings during business hours. As drafted, the legislation takes steps to address this reality, but we believe further discussion with councils needed to better understand what is meant by public access to bathrooms. Furthermore is written, "The bill puts significant compliance authority on DCAST. While we're charged with managing our 55 buildings, our authority does not extend to all public-facing buildings that are city-owned or leased, and that limitation poses considerable challenges to any potential implementation of this measure." Additionally, the provision requiring the 28-day advance notice to labor unions representing custodial workers prior to opening available bathrooms for public access poses a unique challenge to implementation, as it requires a level of coordination that will prove difficult to achieve within this tight timeframe. Similarly, the 30-day reporting timeline is itself a challenging mark to meet. Regarding Introduction 563, this bill that would require water bottle filling stations in city buildings be made available for use by members of the public, we recognize that access to clean water is important for the health and wellness of our fellow New Yorkers, and public water fountains help reduce plastic waste, which this measure is, this proposed measure is designed to achieve. To reiterate, this administration has historically been supportive of policies that encourage healthier lifestyles and promote sustainability. Similar to the prior proposals relating to public access to city spaces, DCAST looks forward to further dialogue with city council about ensuring that there is consistency in how city spaces are defined and DCAST's role when it comes to managing those assets. Again, we thank council for its ongoing commitment to increasing public access to city facilities and improving efficiency in their use. As reflected here, we at DCAST are willing to work with council in its efforts to promote practical changes to advance these goals and enhance our ability to best serve all who use our public buildings. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much to each of the panelists for your thoughtful testimony. Before we go to questions, I just want to offer if Councilmember Gutierrez would like to speak to her bill briefly. No pressure. Okay. You can jump in later if you'd like. I know that Ms. Lu has a hard out at 11:30, so just thought we would offer council members who have questions for her an opportunity to go first, and then we could offer questions of the other panelists. Do you want to begin, Councilmember Nurse? Go ahead. And we've been joined by Councilmember Palladino, who I know had horrible traffic this morning. Thank you for making it.
So I just have a handful of questions. I know you have to leave. I guess first, this is just a general. The June announcement of the Urin Luck Initiative, the mayor indicated that all city hall bathrooms should be open to the public, as it's the people house, and we just wanted to clarify because we got conflicting reports. Are the city hall restrooms available to the public right now?
So the city hall building is open to people that have business here, right? You have to have ID. You have to be able to enter for a reason, whether it's a hearing or a meeting. And when you're inside, absolutely, right? The restrooms here are available to anybody who has business here, but for, in terms of security and other considerations, it's for people with business inside the building.
So public when you're in here.
Public when you're inside the building, yeah.
Okay. The, I wanted to talk about the New York City. I love that name, the working group. You're coordinating between agencies, advanced the existing pipeline of restrooms now in development, you're generating new policies. Can you give us a little more details in terms of who's a part of this working group? Has it met yet, and how often is it scheduled to meet?
Yeah, that's a great question. We've been meeting on a bi-weekly basis. The core members of this team are deputy mayor for operations. We have DOT and the Parks Department, because right now, we're really focused on making sure the Parks Pipeline restroom projects are being moved on time, on budget, and then also really focused on siting those 14 automatic public toilets that's sitting in DOT's portfolio. We welcome other city agencies, so sometimes we'll pull in DCP to look at POPs, for example, the publicly-owned private spaces, to see what is the status of restrooms in those spaces to make sure that they are readily open to the public. We'll also pull in other agencies like MOCs, for example, to look at other tools that may be at city agencies' disposal as a way to figure out how do we get units out faster? So for example, MOCs, they are piloting a new tool that is called Challenge-Based Procurement, and they really recently gave us a briefing on that that could be a strategy to help the Parks Department or other agencies think about getting more restrooms out on the street.
So given the, I mean, you're kind of getting at my next question, especially around automated public toilets. The amount of people, the amount of entities that have to approve these and sign off seems just an enormous barrier to just getting it done. So I'm just wondering, besides this MOC tool, I mean, what, does the administration have recommendations on how to cut down all the people that need to be involved in this? I mean, some of what we're trying to get at is a long-term plan and strategy so that we can kind of streamline some of this stuff, and it just seems like there's everybody in the mix. So I'm curious, just like, if you have any initial recommendations for approving specifically automated public toilets, but then also your specific role or this specific position, how is it, you know, where is it in the layer of all those entities? Are you the head person in charge of the public toilet planning process? I mean, it's kind of, you know, there's a lot of people in the mix, so if you could just kind of illustrate for us a little bit more.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. I kind of see myself and this role and my team's role here at City Hall as sort of a quarterback. We are trying to have a 30,000-foot bird's-eye view across government agencies in the city. And so, for example, the DOT's APT, if we showed you the flow chart of the approval process, it is incredibly tedious. process, it's, it's, it is incredibly tedious and intensive. And to your question about, is there a way that we can cut those steps down, I would love to come back to you and other members of this committee to brainstorm ideas. Some of this stuff, it's been a steep learning curve for me, just learning things that are revocable consent, things that are in the charter, things that are ad code, things that are rulemaking, and trying to understand and peel back the layers to say, okay, what needs to go through what and what could we do on our own as administration? We're mapping that out now.
Got it. One final question. Sorry, two final questions. I'll be very brief. In the Local Law 114 report, it showed that the pre-design phase for bathroom, bathroom siting process takes about 10 to 16 months, and we're just wondering at what part of this process, what part of this process is, is the most time-consuming before it gets, before we get an actual design for folks?
Yeah. I, I, there's colleagues from the Parks Department here, so colleagues definitely jump in if I'm, if I'm misrepresenting this in any way, but my understanding is that, at least in the Parks Department side, there's site work. So in other words, all of this utilities and sewer and electrical underground is one massive sort of time-intensive process, and a lot of times, it's not just as simple as sort of putting in this 20-by-20 sort of box, if you will, onto a site, but it's the site investigation work, drainage, utilities, sloping, grading, all of these other considerations and analysis take a lot of time before you even get to the box part of the structure.
Okay, and then my final question, I'm not fully sure exactly how much the Portland Lou cost. Do you know how much this model costs? I, I saw 185K, above 500,000 for operating costs. Do you, do you know off the top of your head what the total is for a project like this?
Yeah, 1 million.
1 million?
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Exactly.
I mean, going from three to five to now one, and then the construction period is how long anticipated to be?
Do we have a sense? Sorry, bear with me, I just want to make sure I'm telling you the. About one year.
One year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess I would love to see, you know, what a, a target goal for this, this would be. I know that it's a pilot.
Right.
But I mean, at this point, you know, given the lack of access, it feels like it should be like Phase 1, and given how low that cost is, it seems very achievable to hit this target of, you know, one, one toilet for every 2,000, inclusive of what we already have built that can just be brought online and operational and maintained more effectively and made more visibly known to New Yorkers that it's public. And then, I'm done after this, but you know, one of, sorry, I rolled on. I wasn't expecting to go so early, so what are some of the conversations you all are having about the criminalization of, you know, public urination or things like that? Given, we acknowledge we don't have a sufficient public infrastructure network for people who need to go, the number of unhoused people on our streets, the, the number of people who just need to go for a number of medical issues or conditions therein, are you all having these, inclusive of your conversations where you're thinking about the public realm and everything that happens in it, are you all having any conversations with NYPD or the Law Department or any place about how we can decriminalize this thing, given it is the city's fault mostly that we don't have enough infrastructure and that the amount of summonses have gone up, criminal summonses, the amount of people who are incurring fines who literally don't have a dollar to them to pay something like this, and they just, they have a bladder and they gotta go?
Yeah. You're pointing out an area of work that absolutely our team is happy to sort of start conversations, and you're, you're pointing out like an area that is an opportunity for us to take more of a role in and play that coordination role. I know from the Parks Department side and talking to the Parks Team, the pep officers like to lead with education first and foremost, but there is absolutely room and opportunity to engage PD as well, to sort of figure out how we balance quality of life and maintaining that quality of life, but also making sure that we're not overly penalizing, to your point, New Yorkers who are lacking this access and amenity.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Nurse. I just have a couple of questions for our Chief Public Realm Officer as well, and I know Councilmember Brewer does as well. If anyone else does, please just let us know. So I just have to ask, were you responsible for the Lou York Working Group name?
It depends if you like it or not.
Well, can I ask how you're spelling it? Is it like named in your honor, or is it LOU, or like how are you doing it?
Oh, no, it's, it's L-O-O.
L-O-O, okay.
Like, I guess it's more a British thing, they call it the Lou.
Right. No, I got that. I understood the pun. I just was wondering if you were taking personal credit for it as like a working group named after you as well, but it doesn't sound like it. So in your testimony, you imply that Councilmember Nurse's legislation that would require a restroom for every 2,000 New Yorkers would require thousands of restrooms and is perhaps too ambitious. What is the correct ratio that we should be looking at of numbers of New Yorkers per bathroom? How many bathrooms do we need?
Yeah, that's a great question, Chair. I'll be honest, I don't have the right answer. I, I don't know. That, that's just the, the real honest answer. I know that on the city side, we are looking at high areas of foot traffic, so we know where like the high demands are and the most intensive places are, and then we also know where sort of the underserved areas are. And so, and when we look at sort of our existing resources and the map of need and use, that's how we're prioritizing. I'm not sure that we have sort of the, like a, a, a specific number in mind, like, oh yeah, like this, this is gonna unlock, unlock all the things for all the people.
I hear you.
Yeah.
But I think it's the, the vision of Councilmember Nurse's legislation, which I, I agree with, is that we need that master plan, and that does require us to, to hold our, to set numerical goals and then hold ourselves to those goals. So I do think it's, it would be valuable for the administration to have a perspective on, on that. I would also just note, you know, downtown Brooklyn are the most heavily trafficked locations in terms of foot traffic in the borough. We've seen no new bathrooms sited in downtown Brooklyn in this administration, despite the very clear need. It's also an area where people come from across the borough for services, whether in the courts, reentry, mental health, substance use, et cetera, and we're proud that it, it's a kind of hub for those services, but we don't have the bathroom access to go along with it. You noted in your testimony, and this may be a question for you and for Parks, and I know we have some representatives there, that there's a challenge with park staffing these days. My understanding from the Brooklyn Parks Department is that they haven't had this few staff in over 40 years, which is just remarkable. Do we have enough staff today in the Parks Department to maintain our public parks bathrooms? I heard a no from a colleague, but I, we can, we can bring the Parks Department up to answer that more directly if they would like. Well, we'll have to swear them in though. Sorry, Matt. Mr. Matt Drury, steamed, I don't know, Assistant Commissioner? Am I getting that right? Deputy, close?
Thank you for the promotion, but no, I'm the Chief of, my name's Matthew Drury. I'm the Chief of Citywide Legislative Affairs for the Parks Department.
Deserve a promotion. We'll talk to Sue.
Thanks very much.
Sorry.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before you're in this council and respond honestly to council member questions?
I do.
Linking promoting you may not help.
Um, thank, thank you for the question, Councilmember. I, I, the short answer is yes. I, you know, we absolutely utilize our resources, including the staff that we're provided with our baseline funding as efficiently and strategically as possible, and we are actually quite proud of our record in keeping our, our restroom buildings, you know, safe, clean, and, and stocked, particularly, I'll point out.
Barry, how many years have you been in the Parks Department?
I'm sorry?
How many years have you worked for the Parks Department?
Uh, nine years, coming on 10.
And is this the lowest head count that Parks has ever had in your tenure?
I don't believe, no, I believe, you know what, I'd have to, I don't want to speak out of turn, I'd have to take a look. I don't have those figures in front of me. I'll just point out two quick things, that the most recent mayor's management report, we are quite proud that our, that, to have a two-point, two percentage point increase in the overall condition, and also point out that the in-service metric also saw a two percentage point increase compared to last fiscal year. So in, in short, we're, you know, our, our employees are dedicated and tireless, and, and we're very, very proud of those efforts.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lou, you highlighted the rather complex bureaucratic hurdles that the city encounters in trying to cite new bathrooms. What has the Adams Administration accomplished to speed up that process so far?
My colleagues on the DMO team have been spearheading under the leadership of Deputy Mayor Joshi an entire capital reform delivery sort of overhaul. I know that those initiatives are moving the needle to speed up procurement reform, construction reform, and those things, and those items. So that, that is sort of one work stream, just overall changing the way the city government is built, public infrastructure. I think the second thing is something that I think Councilmember Nurse is, is calling out rather, you know, point well made, which is that I think under the leadership of Commissioner Donahue, the Parks Department is really looking at other models, like the Portland Lou, right? These modular things that would be a lot more cost-effective to get out.
Just remind me, when was that announced?
The Portland Lou?
It was in the first year of the Adams Administration, if I recall correctly. It was 2022?
That might be correct, yeah.
And the pilot has still not opened in Irving Park? It has? Under construction, so it's not yet opened, but we're getting there? Okay, so we're two to three years after, two and a half, two years after it's been announced, has not yet opened, but we hope that it will soon. Okay. I mean, I, I recognize that going from three to five years and $4 million to one year and $1 million, if this is successful, is an enormous, enormous progress, but it's, you know, I think Commissioner Donahue correctly came in with great fanfare to this, announce this pilot and say that construction of parks bathrooms is a major problem, costs too much, way too slow. It's, you know, we're very eager to see it actually up and running. It has taken multiple years to get just to this stage. Okay, and then the last question I want to ask, and I think Councilmember Brewer has a, a couple of things for our Chief Public Realm Officer as well, is just about access to information around bathrooms. You mentioned potentially engaging Google. We've started putting up ads on Link NYC kiosks in downtown Brooklyn in our district about where bathrooms are so that people know. What else has the administration done to enhance access to New Yorkers about where publicly accessible bathrooms are located?
Yeah, like yourself and Borough President Levine, I think we have made the restroom map layer and the URL. We publicized it on the Link NYC kiosk, we did a run on the back of TLC, on the taxi TVs. We welcome ways to partner with pretty much anyone really, including a bathroom influencer, Teddy Segal from Got2Go NYC, to help really promote and get that information available. Back to this Google map, I think what I have learned from talking to colleagues in government that have created, you know, different types of maps, like, we are drowning in data and information, but at the end of the day, if it doesn't go to where users are actually using it, it's, it's still quite a bit of a gap. And so we think that, to be quite honest, the most effective way is if Google could just make it available when they, you know, when anybody is opening up that map and they could just see it. That would be the North Star.
And has a formal request been made to Google from the City of New York?
Yes, I've reached out to them to ask them to see if they might be able to help us instead of doing a layer, which is an extra step to just make it available.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Brewer, do you have a couple of questions as well?
Yes, I mean, I, poor Google, William Floyd gets many questions, I'm sure, but we also want them, thanks to Doris, to put up the cosigns so that we know that when somebody's name is up on a sign, and it's amazing website that Doris is building. So just so you know, there are a lot of requests of William Floyd. Do you know who he is?
Yes.
Former intern, me. Couple of questions. Number one, on the POPS, is it the law that POPS are supposed to have bathrooms, or does it depend on each contract? Do you know?
I believe it depends on each contract.
So can we, should not we change this, that every POP should have a bathroom?
That is something that we are talking to Department of City Planning about in terms of the way that they set up incentives. As I understand it, Councilmember, the tools at Council, at DCP's disposal is incentives and not mandates, but would love to further sort of explore that if there's a way to put a finer point on that.
I think, I must admit, that would make it a lot easier because they're very, I don't know where they are, and there's a map, I know, in Manhattan, there are many, and there are many people that could take advantage of them. I don't know when you have a POPS where there is a bathroom, if there's any insignia or any indications, public space. You know, the ones that I know that are in the 60s, they do have bathrooms because they have inside space, but then there are many, of course, that are public parks and they may or may not have. So I, that would be worth exploring. Second, for the Parks Department, so we just did a big study, sorry, a big study of bathrooms. Did you see it? We got a lot of press, and the issue is, you know, they're in bad shape, you need money. How, how are we going to address this bathroom problem? Because you'd have many more bathrooms to deal with this issue if the Parks Department would upgrade their quality. And then the second question I have is Bryant Park, Bella Abseck Park, they both have the best bathrooms in Manhattan, in the parks, just so you know, happen to know that. Bryant has an attendant, because they have the funding for that. So do you think you need attendants in the bathrooms in order to keep them up to date, in which case you should say that?
So thank you for the questions. I'll take them in, in two parts. I think we, we did see the council's report, and you know, I, I'll, I'll point out that the, the report notably did, did focus on 50, you know, 51 locations that Parks, Parks Own inspections found to be, you know, having a series of, you know, challenges in terms of maintenance, and it sounds as if the council's report bore that out. And so we are, we're constantly looking at ways of, you know, there are some facilities that are intensely used and a challenge to keep, you know, pristine, and I, and we're dedicated, obviously, to, our, our employees work tirelessly and are highly dedicated to keeping those, so we thank the council for its, you know, advocacy and its support in all these efforts, and you know, we're, we're hoping to work closely with you moving forward on, on further efforts. And as for the idea of attendants, there, you know, there are, I guess we would refer to it as fixed post staff, like there is, there's sort of a combination of models for our maintenance staff, but there are many locations. I don't know that attendant is quite the right term because they would have maintenance responsibility sort of throughout the park, but certainly a more steady presence is, we are quite often able to provide, and we're, we're very proud of that.
Okay, so are you, I mean, I don't want to belabor the point, but one bathroom I need is 13 million and the other's 2.5, just to give you some numbers. So what, I guess my question is, as part of public realm or as part of Parks Department, what kind of focus is there for funding for these bathrooms at parks? Because you, you need to fix them up.
For sure, and as I, I think our Chief Public Realm Officer has pointed out, that, you know, the city is in the process of, of several renovation projects and new, and construction of new restrooms throughout the city, and we're, and, and we're going to continue to expand that effort even further. So we're, you know, this, this administration is investing, you know, millions and millions of dollars in, in these restroom repairs. Having said that, you know, we have over 700 public restroom buildings, you know, many of which have been around for, you know, ages, and you know, and like any other public facility, you know, they're, they're gonna, you know, keeping it in a state of good repair does require that investment, that's something we're dedicated to. We work closely with the mayor's office and OMB in making sure that we're investing wisely, and you know, there's always more to do, we, we, you know, we, so that's, but that's an ongoing process that we're, that we're focused on.
One of the problems I'll let you go is, as you know, if you're white, you can walk into any hotel, I know where every bathroom is in every hotel in the borough of Manhattan, and you can walk in and use the bathroom. If you're black or brown and particularly young, you feel that somebody's going to stop you. That's reality, seen it with my own eyes. So the public bathrooms are more important than ever because it is, the, the bathroom hotel discrimination is real. So I, I'm just saying, fix the parks, put it a priority, and then maybe POPS or something else. Obviously, public buildings could work. The municipal building, I, that is somewhat open. If you know to go there, you go to the second floor, I know how to do it, right upstairs, but it's, you know, it's not public, there's no sign that says, come, that would be an example. You could put that on a sign because you don't have to go through the scanners to do it. Thank you very much. I can give you every public bathroom that could go in every public building. Thank you.
I think we're gonna have to set up a meeting between Gail and Laura after this to go through all of these, but I could not agree. But I could not agree more wholeheartedly with Councilmember Brewer's sentiments about the discrimination that exists in hotels and restaurants and the differences in how white people and people of color are treated, and the importance of access to public bathrooms for all New Yorkers. And, you know, you mentioned the map that's on Link NYC kiosk, but it's only through QR code. So if you don't have a smartphone to take a picture of it to figure out where the bathroom is, it's not going to be all that helpful to you. So, you know, I just think we need to, we have a lot of work to do in this space. I think that's why this package of legislation is so important. We have promised to get you out of here in four minutes. And Councilmember Nurse has one final question and then we will move on.
I'm going to be very fast. I want to talk about the automated, automated public toilets. What's the company named? JC, yeah, okay, Deco. Just want to double check for how they're accommodating the multiple needs of a public restroom. So one of the things that I gripe about is not all the, a lot of stalls in our public bathrooms don't have a sink in them. And as people are utilizing menstrual cups, for example, you don't have sink, it's quite, it's messy. I won't go into details here, but making sure that someone can change their diaper, making, you know, there's needs of workers, people who are, especially our delivery workers, they need to lock up a bike near it. So just wondering how these, this, this company that's installing this and redesigning it, how they're accommodating all of that, all of those different needs in some of their redesign work?
That, yeah, no, those are absolutely great points. And we can absolutely circle back with you to get more specific. I know that JC Deco is in the process, right, of updating the units that they are giving to New York City as part of this massive, like, FCRC franchise agreement that has just been re-upped. I know that a lot of the elements have to do with the kind of water and sewer electrical connections in these new units so that they're less underground intensive. To the other amenities, that critical amenities that you're talking about, we can circle back with you just to make sure how the new designs are accounting for those elements.
Okay, I can submit the question and follow up. And then the only other thing I would say is that somebody had come to us about a, looking at commercial corridors where there are vacant storefronts. Because it sounds like the plumbing issue and water and all the underground networks is a big issue. And, you know, I think we should be looking at vacant storefronts where you can be setting up stalls that can be publicly managed and have workers because that kind of cuts out half of your stuff, right? You're just doing internal plumbing and filing some paperwork. And I think we should be exploring that kind of model, similar to what you mentioned in your, somebody's testimony about, you know, cities paying businesses or incentivizing it. We could also be, you know, doing RFPs for people to manage these things. And lastly, I do hope that Parks comes next budget season and asks for more money for maintenance workers because we're three budget cycles in and everyone says, we do the best with what we got, but it's not enough. And every time, you guys just tell us to our face that you have what you need and you don't. So just come and tell us what you need and we'll fight for it. We're already fighting for it, but, you know, we need the workforce to accommodate this so that the, our bathrooms, you know, don't have smeared feces, as people were mentioning outside today. We need it to, to be clean and safe. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Nurse. I just, again, want to echo those sentiments. I think one of the greatest shortcomings in the budget that was adopted this year was the lack of funding for the Parks Department is a major problem. We see it manifest in each of our districts and our communities every single day. We do not have the staff in the Parks Department that we need to maintain our parks in appropriate conditions. And we fought hard for additional funding and as anyone who was involved in this budget process would know, OMB rejected it and the mayor's office rejected it. And we were only able to secure some additional resources for parks, but we needed far more. And I couldn't agree with Councilmember Nurse more, we need that addressed immediately. I'm going to just take a moment since we did not receive in-person testimony from the administration on our legislation to repeal the mayor's form. We did receive written testimony from Tiffany Raspberry, the Director of Intergovernmental and External Affairs for the Office of the Mayor. She has joined our committee a couple of times this year, so maybe she's sick of us. But I do want to respond directly to some of the, some of the issues we found in her testimony. She noted that the council had made 450 requests using this form since it was created in April. That means that a council member is submitting one and a half requests per month. I bother city agencies and need information from city agencies one and a half times every 15 minutes, right? It means that nobody's completing this form, that it's not working. Senator Schumer's office, according to the Freedom of Information Act request from a month or so ago, has submitted the form zero times. Senator Gillibrand's office has submitted the form zero times. Governor Hochul's office has submitted one form. Congress members Ocasio-Cortez, Velazquez, Espaillat have completed the form once. So what's clear is that some elected officials who are cozy with the administration don't need to submit the form and other elected officials have been directed to submit. And plain and simple, the mayor and City Hall should not be directing city agencies to respond to elected officials based on whether they are a friend or a critic, whether they are Democrat or Republican. All of us have been duly elected to serve our communities, to ensure that our streets are clean, that our neighborhoods are safe, and agencies have a charter mandated responsibility to work with bodies of elected officials and council members to do our collective jobs. And this form has just, plain and simple, gotten in the way. And he claims for efficiency are disingenuous and bogus. And that is why 37 council members, as of this morning, have co-prime sponsored this legislation to repeal the form once and for all and clarify the language in the charter that city agencies are directed to work with council members and other bodies of elected officials. So I just wanted to say that very plainly. Of course, if anyone from the administration would like to respond, you're more than welcome, but I'm going to guess that the answer is no. So I'd like to now turn over to Councilmember Gutierrez, who I know was going to comment on her legislation and ask some questions.
Thank you, Chair. Good to see everyone. My questions are regarding-
Can I just say, and I know, Ms. Liu, you had to leave, so we totally understand. Thank you for being with us this morning.
Thank you.
Sorry, Councilmember Gutierrez.
My questions are specifically about Intro 191, so I'm going to direct them to Executive Deputy Commissioner for DCAST on that. So just a quick second of context regarding this bill. I'm not too sure how long you've been at DCAST, but there was a beloved privately rented daycare in the South Side of Williamsburg. Now we're coming up on 10 years next fall, who had for a long time secured 20-year leases when the city could do 20-year leases to operate this childcare facility. And the, the staff at the daycare approached me at the time as a staffer and now Brooklyn Borough President, Prebien Councilmember Reynoso, saying, we think our lease is up, right? And so these are the tenants of the property saying, we have no sense of the lease, but we think that the lease is up. Our landlord, wherein prime real estate in Williamsburg, is bringing people in to look at the building. We have no sense if we're going to be able to renew our lease. We have over 180 kids at this particular facility. We have over 45 staff members at this particular facility. This would be a huge loss. Now, what started, and Council Chair Russler at the time was part of the administration and part of the solution there, was started like an 18 to 20-month process of trying to figure out how to work with this landlord, this private landlord, who had no incentive of renewing a lease, who had very little communication with the city. My understanding, it was the only ability, it was the only line of access was between DCAST directly and the landlord. The tenant traditionally has no say when renewing that lease. And so this is the, really the spirit and inspiration of this bill. Next year, they'll be coming up on their 10-year and we'll be having this fight all over again. And I fear that it happens more and more, especially gentrifying and vulnerable communities where there is little incentive to continue to do business with the city, whether that be for a childcare facility or a senior center. And we're not getting enough notice from the city, from DCAST in this instance, to really help to be a part of the process. We are folks in the community that have relationship with these landlords. And I think it wasn't until we were able to step in that there was a much more favorable outcome of the lease. So the spirit of the bill is to give tenants who have the relationship with those tenants, with the landlords, excuse me, two years' notice. Now, from your testimony, I know it says you're reviewing the impact, you're checking with your law department on the city's ability to meet the obligations. What is the, the bill is merely calling for like physical mail and an email two years before. What are you anticipating is the impact on the agency's ability to meet that requirement?
So thank you for your question. And you raise a lot of issues that I'm going to try and break down. So the instance that you are talking about, and I was not at DCAST, I have been there eight years, but was not there during this particular instance. However, 4-203 of the ad code deals with city-owned property and the way the city leases or licenses that under a short-term agreement. The issue that you're talking about is a private landlord that leases to the city and that's under, that, this part of the code does not apply. So when we lease, what we call lease-in, so we lease from private landlords to support city agencies, those are negotiations that we do and we could put in the lease and we certainly could put something in the lease to talk about expiration and how much notice the landlord gives. And I think what you're talking about here is a daycare, which would have then been, sometimes a private entity comes in to run that daycare and it's a city's lease, but we have an organization that's running that. That's generally not the model. Usually, it's the city agency itself. But there are times when a city agency even knows it's going to, the lease is going to expire, the landlord's not going to renew. So we can certainly talk to you about how we can change our language that we put into the lease before entering into that agreement with the landlord to prevent exactly what you're talking about. Currently, there's no, there are no regulations and this would not address that issue. So we're absolutely, you know, this is an issue for even city agencies that end up where a landlord does not want to renew or is not reasonable with the terms. But generally, it's free market without a lot of controls around those areas. So absolutely, we can talk about what council thinks that we would like to see in the leases in order to at least know when we're, when we start negotiating, which is about two years before expiration, how we can either know that the landlord's going to permit the city to stay as tenant or it's subtenant, not subtenant, but operator, or whether we need to find new space.
Can I, Chair, can I just ask a couple more questions? My apologies.
Take as much time as you would like.
So you're right, it's, I think these are unique lease agreements that the city goes in to, to go in with, to private landlords for, in this case, and in multiple cases in my district, so not just a daycare center, I'm highlighting Nuestros Niños, but also I have multiple senior centers that are in the same scenario. So I get that that is probably the least common, but it happened very recently, just in Ridgewood during the summer. And so I'm glad that you're open to the communication, but I just think it's a little concerning that, that the administration has been seeing this happen for multiple years now and that it's not something that is like just one extra step. At this point, in these particular scenarios of privately owned properties, does DCAST have a process to provide tenants with notice that their lease is expiring?
So are you talking about when it's, it's private property-
Yes.
-that the city occupies?
Mm-hmm.
And are you saying, is there a rule that we would notify our tenant, which is usually a city agency? Or are you talking only about when there's an operator in that?
Let's do both, so that I'm clear.
Okay. So there is a process where DCAST notifies our tenant. So say it's Department of-
It's a city agency.
City agency. And that lease is going to expire in two years. We contact, we, we monitor when the lease is going to expire, contact the agency, and the agency makes an assessment, do we still need to keep that space? And they submit a form to keep that space.
Two years.
It is two, for some, it's longer, but it's, it's at least usually two years where we are reaching out or the agency reaches out to us to do that assessment. So in the case of an operator, which you're talking about-
Nonprofit.
-senior centers or daycare, those are really the only places where we have operators. Just so you know, for daycares, that whole portfolio has been transferred to DOE. And daycares were very difficult, as are senior centers, and very difficult to cite. So it is, it is probably a longer process where we might give three years to the, to the tenant who probably would like to stay there. Something that they, the policy was before being transferred to DOE or moving forward, that's what you're doing now? I'm not sure what DOE does with respect to their taking over those leases, but I do know that DCAST would start negotiating, usually well before or at that two-year period. So yes, so to answer your question succinctly, the tenant would know that this is when they're expiring. It just might be that we cannot work out a deal with the landlord.
Okay.
That's the most common reason.
So in both scenarios, the tenant, whether they're an agency or a nonprofit, in my instance, would know well within two years of the lease expiring that there's, your lease is up, we are attempting to renegotiate.
Correct. It's just that we may not be able to get to resolution. And that's probably where the uncertainty for both the city and the operator come into place.
Okay, well, that didn't happen 10 years ago, but we're moving forward.
Okay.
Can you give me a sense, and just two more questions, I apologize. Do you have a sense of just how many of these properties DCAST has where there, where there's a private landlord and an operator, a nonprofit, like you said, mainly daycares and senior centers? Do you have a sense of how many of those leases you are all a part of, considering, yes, that the DOE now does the daycare? And do you have a sense of where they're located? Or can you share?
I don't have it off with me today, but I can absolutely get you that information very quickly.
Okay.
And the request for the daycares would be properly made to DOE. I can give you the number that we had when we transferred that portfolio.
I would love it.
And I can certainly get you the number of senior centers that are operated, that where we do the lease and have the senior center operator in place.
Excellent. And then my last question, do you, I guess, what do you do in the instances where tenants are not made aware? I don't know, maybe they're not checking, there's, unfortunately, specifically with daycare, there tends to be a lot of turnover because of terrible wages. And so oftentimes, the communication that would go to someone, that person is no longer there. What do you do in those, how many touches do you try to do with a tenant in that instance to ensure that they're aware their lease is expiring and that you are in negotiations?
I would say repeatedly and multiple because it puts DCAST in, the longer we wait to begin those negotiations, the more difficult it is. And certainly in a timely process, you know, another step for both of these is that ULP is required. So if the ULP is about to expire, then we need to start that process very early, which is usually more than the two years. So I would say often and multiple times.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Gutierrez, for this great bill. I always think of it as the Nuestros Niños bill. This Save Nuestros Niños legislation, I think that's the new branding. The, and I'll just say, when I worked in the previous administration, it was always one of the things that I tried to monitor closely with DCAST, with ACS, with DIFTA, of like where we might have leases that are coming up, where we're struggling with the landlord, because there's nothing more devastating for a community, for a senior center or childcare center to lose their lease and for us to not have a viable alternative. In the heart of Williamsburg, where properties are just so damn expensive, right? And so if Councilmember Gutierrez and the tenants have as much advanced notice as possible, she can help, we can help find ways to identify solutions. And so I know that now it sounds like that is, it didn't happen 10 years ago, but it more often is happening now, that notice is being provided. I just wondered, from your experience, both in your role at DCAST and previously at the Law Department, do you think we could pursue kind of boilerplate language in contracts or license agreements that require this notification? Is that a better approach? Is that an alternative approach or a complementary approach in addition to the bill that could be helpful? What do you, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it'd be interesting your insight.
I think it depends what you want notice of exactly. If it's the landlord must give the city notice if it intends to renew, you know, that would have to go to Law Department to see if that is something that you can legislate and put into requirements for a lease. If it's whether DCAST can have discussions with the tenant or the operator, yes, absolutely. I can guarantee we can do that at any time and have those conversations start. It's really, you know, unfortunately, at this point, if there is no legislation, we can't control whether the landlord will agree to renew or agree to reasonable terms. And a lot of times, they have, you know, everybody knows they want to keep a senior center or daycare there and the landlord sometimes is unreasonable and it takes a long time to reach an agreement. So I think that's the bigger issue. Sure, if you could legislate it, it would be great for the city as a tenant.
No, and I think there are landlords that know they have us over a barrel, right? That they're in a gentrifying community or they know how desperate, you know, Councilmember Dinowitz is to keep the childcare center in Kingsbridge. And, you know, we're going to pay what we can pay to keep them there and it can make those negotiations tough. We don't, we empathize with you and the challenges of your job in securing those lease agreements or license agreements. I think we just want to make sure that they, we can strengthen the communication and awareness with as much notice as possible. with as much notice as possible, so that great advocates like Councilmember Gutierrez can be involved in, and Nuestros Ninos have awareness of what's happening, so that, you know, we can help as much as possible.
Absolutely, I mean, I think we can agree to do that and give council members notice, and that's all, that's easily, you know, available to you. I, I don't think this does that, and I'm not sure where you would put it if you wanted to, you know, codify it, but it is not a problem for us to reach out to council members when a senior center or daycare is in the district to tell you when that is going, well, the daycare, it would have to be DOE, so I can't agree on their part, but certainly for senior centers, to let you know that that lease is about to expire.
Well, I really appreciate your testimony and appreciate Councilmember Gutierrez for this very thoughtful legislation that I know she has been pushing up the hill for many years. So, thank you. I think we'll hear from Councilmember Dinowitz and then Councilmember Brewer, if that works.
Yeah, I'll be quick, although, we did lose a childcare center in Kingsbridge. Was that a good guess?
I, you know, I was totally, I, you have three neighborhoods-
It's a terrible guess, actually, terrible thing.
You have three neighborhoods, I was going to pick one of three, right?
Yeah.
But I'm sorry to hear about the childcare center.
You got it right. The city got it wrong, but you got it right. And I, I want to just quickly ask about introduction 162, about city bicycle storage. You said in your testimony, DCAST currently has an existing bike policy available to any tenant that wishes to explore bike storage. Can you talk a little more about that?
Absolutely. So, in, in compliance with the Department of Transportation's bike plan, DCAST has adopted that plan as its own, so if there is a request from a tenant to add internal bike storage, there is a process that is controlled by the ad code Title 28504, or Rules of the City of New York Title 342-19. And that provides for a tenant who wishes to have bike storage in the building to make that request and go through that process. And generally, the process is not so different from this current legislation, it's really just asking the Commissioner of DCAST to do that in the buildings instead of having each tenant do it. Now, to that end, we do have some internal building bike storage, and we mostly have external bike storage where we have, you know, I'm not sure that we've gone through what, what this legislation is asking for the Commissioner to weigh in on all 55 buildings, but certainly we have done it for buildings that we know that we can do it.
Well, I'll tell, I, I, very simply, more systemically, to say where feasible, the, the city will find bike storage, or have in their buildings already existing bike storage, so that employees, students, and visitors can go in, and no prearranged system needs to be in place, because we've done it with this legislation.
Sure. So, just to note that, that we don't oversee the DOE buildings-
Right.
-so, for schools, we wouldn't have jurisdiction or authority. And similarly, you know, and I, I think it's kind of in all these bills, we really, we oversee our 55 buildings, so there are obviously a lot more city properties where you would want this to apply, and we can only really speak for our 55, and for what our Commissioner, you know, could do to take this effort on for those buildings. And then the rest is, you know, city-owned, so under city's jurisdiction, but not DCAST.
I would note that the legislation does say schools, although I recognize that it's not you, but it's, it's in the legislation, so I do want to note that.
Sure.
And you said managing city-owned properties and some of the limitations that can potentially impede ability to enforce compliance, can you talk about some of those limitations?
So, it's, it's really just what I was saying, that we have the 55 buildings, so we don't, our, our 55 buildings, which are mostly approximately half courthouses and half multi-tenanted office buildings, but it doesn't include precincts, or One Police Plaza, or libraries, or, or other city buildings that this might apply to, it really is those 55. So, though, you know, there can, this legislation would apply to all, it's difficult for DCAST to wrangle the, you know, many, many, many hundreds of buildings that this would apply to, to enforce and to do that assessment, or make other commissioners do that assessment for their sites.
Well, no, it'd be difficult.
Yeah.
But that's why we, we do this work, because it's, it's something difficult, but, but important-
Not saying that it can't happen.
-to expand bike access and ability for people to use their bicycles in New York City.
It just that, it, it, there might be, and I think we could discuss this, you know, going further and offline, that the goals can be achieved, and DCAST should be responsible for its own buildings, but probably a different entity within the city to, to kind of make sure that everyone is doing what is required by the bill and reporting on that.
Okay, and would love to talk further.
Sure.
And for no other reason than I'm trying to get Council Chair Wrestler to get a bicycle, his own bicycle, not just for Lion City Bike. It's a great thing. And I just, I quickly want to ask for introduction 587, Deputy Commissioner, you had, I know we discussed this at Chair Gutierrez's previous hearing, about feedback, each time a case is marked as closed, providing a feedback system. You said in your testimony that you're, I want to get the quote right, but that you're working on a system like that, you're, you appreciate our shared interests, it's not needed, you're already working on such a survey, can you talk more about that survey?
Yeah, sure, thank you, I appreciate you recall from last time. So, we do have something in flight, and that is moving along, and believe it will meet the intent of what you've identified in the bill.
So, it's actually good news, it should make it easy for you to, you know, for easy for it to pass, easier for you to support it, right?
Easy for?
Easy for you to support the legislation since you're already doing it.
Well, we actually believe that we don't need the legislation, because we're going to be able to produce this without it, and it will meet the needs of what you've identified.
Can you talk more about specifically what you're asking in the survey, who will receive the survey?
Sure. The design captures customers who have filed a service request, in any way they come through to 311, and then canvassing them after that completion of that service request by the agency, giving them the opportunity to weigh in on that. And then there's the, the, the work-work part of collecting that, pulling that together, you know, the apparatus of pulling that together, to then be able to make something that would be able to be put into a report or made available publicly.
Great, well, it sounds like, you know, you and the city council are on the same page, so this should be a no-brainer to actually, to pass this, to ensure that it's codified, and that we're receiving those quarterly reports, and that in any future administrations, they continue to do this important work of feedback and accountability. So, glad to hear we're on the same page, and I look forward to working, to try to make this, this legislation, in fact, to support, what it sounds like, to support the work that you're already doing. So, I'd like to hear that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Dinowitz. Is this the first time you've ever had three bills heard at one hearing?
I had a few.
Oh, so basically, Councilmember Gutierrez and I are just taking care of you.
Well, we'll see how, how well you take care of me if these bills pass.
That's up to the speaker. Councilmember Brewer?
Thank you very much. I appreciate your testimony from DCAST regarding maybe working this out. The water filling stations make sense to me particularly, as I said earlier, because if you're telling people to be healthy, you got to have a place for them to do it. So, my question is, do any city buildings have accessible fountains, or is this something that you would be willing to work on? Just give me an idea.
I, we'd absolutely be able to, willing to work on this. I mean, I think, you know, who doesn't love going to the airport and be able to fill your water bottle? So, I, I think part of it is cost. You know, we kind of estimate that the units that can provide, like, the multiple fountain with the water bottle station is, you know, $3,000 to $5,000 just to purchase it and install it. It could go upwards of that, because a lot of times you have to turn the water off in the building, it requires overtime for installation, but I think we would definitely work towards that, and I think for, you know, as we do ADA modifications to buildings, and we need to install better and working water fountains, that we will definitely be willing to look into that and put them wherever we can.
Okay. Do you know if any buildings do have such now? I don't know of anything, but maybe I'm not up to date.
For, the research that we did on this, just for this, but we, we know that there are some in really privately-tenanted spaces, or if you come to like, the city training center on the 24th floor, we have the filling station there, and that was, you know, a more recent remodel, but in most of the spaces, no, it's just a water fountain.
Okay. I mean, I think it would be helpful for the police and the fire and everybody who have the same need that the rest of us do, which is to have, get rid of the plastic, and let's use our great water.
Sure. The, the only other cost I did want to mention is that most of those do have a service contract, and right now, when we looked into it, it's about $30 a month per unit.
Well, maybe we could do a public-private sort of effort, because it seems to me the whole city's trying to be healthy-
Sure.
...climate and everything else. Okay, well, I look forward to working with you on that. Thank you, Commissioner Tool, for everything. I love Doris, as you know. So, my question is, I guess, if there's something, additional resources are needed or not to implement, implement this bill, I will be very nice, Mr. Chair, and not list all the people who have not submitted their archives to Doris, even though I have the list. So, I guess my, no, you're not on the list, you're okay. You haven't been here long enough. But, my question is, I guess it's mostly cost and what other impediments, if any, to this bill.
Well, first, before I address the question, Councilmember, I would like to say that your records in the archive date before your council terms, and back to the Dinkins administration, and perhaps during your role, working with Councilmember Messenger. We've got a lot of stuff from you. At the moment, this would not have an impact, the proposed legislation would not have an impact on the cost of harvesting. We have a contract through 2027, March of 2027, so adding additional accounts won't have an impact. The contract provides for $26,000 increase annually through that point, so adding additional social media posts will not be a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Brewer. I will just do a couple more questions of this panel, and then let you all have a great afternoon. First, for Deputy Commissioner Ringleheim, could you just clarify, do you, does DCAST currently collect data on which city buildings have, which of the 55 DCAST buildings have bicycle storage? And do you track what non, what city-owned buildings have bicycle storage, or is that not something you guys keep tabs on?
We only currently track the ones that we manage-
Okay.
-so, of the 55.
So, the 55 you do track, and what of, can you tell us which of, how many of those 55 have bicycle storage?
I'm going to give you the latest numbers that we had as of this hearing, which was, I believe, 29 have bicycle storage.
Okay. And have you evaluated the feasibility of the other 26 of the 55 that don't?
So, we have, so, so my notes, we have 19 buildings that don't have it, and we have, we have various reasons why they wouldn't have it, so everything from, you know, just lack of sidewalk space to install bike sleds. And 15, so 15 were not eligible to offer bike storage for the DOT Bike Access Plan. So, we can give you more information about why, which buildings those are that don't have it, and why, and which ones do have it, and which ones, which buildings also have some internal storage.
And then, do you consider bike storage in lease negotiations, not in your buildings, but in private lease space for city facilities? Is that something that comes up in negotiations or is considered?
We could absolutely consider it. I'm sure, it's something that should absolutely be on our checklist if it's not already.
I mean, we've seen the number of people who bike to work double in the previous decade, and according to statistics that my very, very smart chief of staff provided, 26% live, 26% of workers live within 2.5 miles of where they work, 45% live within five miles of where they work. These are bikeable distances for lots of New Yorkers, if they have good bike storage at their, you know, at their place of work. And so, you know, I, I think that, you know, we're always trying to encourage the private sector to do the right thing, and it's important for the public sector to be a model. And so, I think it'd be helpful to better understand for the city, for the DCAST-operated buildings, why we don't have bike storage in those places, and what, if anything, we could do to try to modify that, and, you know, just appreciate your openness to thinking through how we can improve upon our progress there. And then, wanted to also ask on the water filling, do you track, well, I guess, I was surprised by, could you just say again, it's $300,000 to $500,000? Is that the right number?
$300,000 to $5,000.
$300,000 to $5,000. Oh, jeez, I was really freaked out for a second there. $300,000, okay, great, that's a much more manageable sum. So, do we track which city-owned and city-leased facilities currently have water bottle filling stations? Like, do we keep good data on that?
So, for our buildings, I, I'm not sure for other agencies or what they might track in, anything outside the 55. We do track where we have water fountains, but we don't have in general, with the exception of like, tenant spaces, we don't have those as water bottle filling stations.
Do you think there's any way, if we were to do like, if we were to do 10 in a building, or a project across multiple buildings, is there a way to make these capably eligible, do you think, or would this be too, would this all expense?
I, I think you would need to have a capably eligible project, and then this could be part of that project.
Add it on, yeah. Okay, that's much smarter. Great, okay, that's very helpful, and I did, Mr. Morrisro, just want to ask, you know, we get so many frustrated constituents who call about, maybe 311, call 311 about issues, often it's relating to illegal parking, that our cases are closed out by the NYPD, and nothing has changed, and nothing has been done. And people will call, multiple people will call, people will call multiple times, and there's just, and they close out the case, often immediately, without any action having been taken. Like, what should I tell my constituents? Like, how do we make this work better? How do we ensure a degree of accountability here, when there is some illegal activity, and the city agency is not properly responding to it? Like, what can we do better and differently here? Like, how do we, how do we adopt, how do we adapt to, to get a better outcome?
Thank you, Chair, and I appreciate the question, I appreciate the context of the question. For, what I focus on is really the, what do we call, the intake and referral process, and our goal then is to make sure that process works, right? The collection of information, make it easy for the public to access 311 in the first place. Can you call, you can go online, you can do a mobile app, you can text, a lot of different ways. So, where we put our energy and our focus is making sure it works upfront, and we handle the intake, we handle the referral, and, and this, that's, that's where kind of our talent, our focus, and our experience lie, and that's what I could speak to.
But I do think 311 tries hard to, through transparency, make sure that agencies are being held accountable to do their jobs, right? And, you know, that's my sense coming out of operations, that you've always brought that mentality to the work, and it's made a real difference, right? Across, in terms of efficacy of city services, it's, it's been enormously impactful. Anything that you can say in like, instances like this where agencies close out cases that should have been, where there should have been some action, or where there could have been some action, is it just that the fact that there's transparent data that we can see that they closed it out and they didn't do anything, is that, I mean, it's kind of maddening, because we don't have, we, we don't have much recourse, right? Is there anything else that you could suggest, or any ways that we could try to secure more responsiveness from agencies to do their jobs?
Okay, appreciate the question. I'll fall back on my experience and what we focus on. We, we aim to really do well with what we can control, our piece of that, and hopefully that enables everyone else that we partner with, whether it be agencies, the administration, the council, that we're getting that front end right. And there's a lot of effort and a lot of focus to make that work, and we're very committed to doing that, and I mentioned in my testimony, you know, the dedicated team at 311, I think from experience, you, you know what that team is like, going back to our, our ID NYC days together. So, that's really where we put that focus, and that, that's our expertise, right?
Right. But then, is it too easy for agencies to close things out? Right? I mean, like, I appreciate the front-end piece, but on the back end, and the agency, like, agencies are also using your interface and system to close out a case and say that it's fine, should we be making that harder on them, if, making it more, adding additional hoops that they need to jump through to demonstrate that they've actually done their job? Like, is that something that we should be pursuing more legislatively or operationally?
Great, okay, appreciate the question. I don't have the expertise on what an agency does to go through that process. Generally speaking, I don't think, believe in making things harder, believe in making things easier, but, yeah, it would be something that, that agency and each agency, right? Because, you know, they vary in their handling, so I'd have to defer to how they would handle that.
I appreciate your diplomatic skills, but, you know, I think that, and I certainly appreciate the instinct from a good government standpoint, that we're trying to streamline things and make it easier, but when folks are not complying with the spirit of the system, then I don't know what choice we have but to make it harder for them to demonstrate that they've done the thing that they claimed they did when they're filling out the, when they're completing, when they're closing out cases without having actually done any work. Because that undermines- Because that undermines public trust and confidence, and the people who they get most, I mean, in addition to the agency involved, they're just as mad at 311. And they say, "We're calling 311, we're calling 311, and we're not getting the response." And so they, it makes, it undermines confidence of New Yorkers in government efficacy overall. And you're the front door for millions of New Yorkers every year, and you do a great job, and you shouldn't be taking the brunt of that, but you do because there are agencies that are inappropriately consistently closing out cases because they don't want to enforce the law. Because somebody has a vest in the dashboard or a parking placard or something else. And there are many other examples, but that's the one that I hear about the most in my district and my community. And I, I do think we need some shift in policy to actually get results. So I appreciate your thoughtful answers. We have been joined by my friend and colleague, Councilmember Jim Gennaro. Councilmember, would you like to ask any questions? Because we're about to close this panel out. You're good?
Good.
Thank you. You survived a marathon hearing yesterday, so we're good, good to have you back today.
Barely.
Barely, barely survived. Well, I just want to thank, I don't, Commissioner Tool, I appreciate your thoughtful feedback on Councilmember Brewer's legislation. I think it's a great bill, and I think your edits would make it, your amendments would make it better. And I just want to thank the three of you for joining us today, being so generous with your time and thoughtful in answering questions. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much. We will, once these guys clear out, call up our next panel. Great. I am now opening the hearing for public testimony. I would like to remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding, and the decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or visual, audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have three minutes to speak on today's hearing topics, you know, that have been around access to government services and public facilities. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. You may have, you may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of the hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be expected, accepted. We'll start with, we'll do two bathroom panels to start. So I would like to call up Daniel Alom on behalf of Borough President Mark Levine, John Caseres from P-Pass, and Bushwick, it looks like, maybe Ridgewood, Allison Wiley from the Coalition for the Homeless, Wilkie, sorry, Allison, and Theodora Segal. And if I butcher anybody's names, you have my great apologies. And our committee counsel will, no, you don't need to be sworn in, so we're just going to have a good time. You all can present in whichever order you would like. You each have three minutes to testify. Thank you. You can present in whichever order you like, I don't care, but you each have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Chair Wrestler and members of the Committee on Government Operations, State and Federal Operations. My name is Daniel Alom, and I am a senior policy analyst for Manhattan Borough President Mark Lee, and I will be testifying on his behalf today. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony at today's hearing on increasing government efficiency and access to city facilities. There are many valuable topics this hearing is sure to explore, including ensuring government processes are inclusive of gender identity and language diversity, expanding access to public building resources, ensuring 311 is responsive to public needs, and more. My testimony submission will focus on the legislation I am proud to sponsor with Councilmember Joseph, Intro 267, a bill that builds on our work to ensure more public bathrooms are built, that more existing bathrooms reopen, and that the public, that, sorry, that the public knows where they can access a bathroom, and that bathrooms remain accessible and function for public needs. As of now, there are fewer than 1,200 public bathrooms for 8.6 million residents. That's roughly one for every 6,000 New Yorkers. Every New Yorker, tourist and resident alike, knows what it is like to be searching for a public bathroom. But public bathrooms access is also a sign of a more inclusive, accessible city. A public bathroom is a place where one can change into a new outfit while during a menstrual period, to change diapers, to support a basic human need without any extra cost. A lack of public bathrooms is an equity issue across gender, disability, age, income, and more. Bathroom access should be a basic human right. We have made huge strides in recent years expanding access to public bathrooms. Recently, the mayor announced that in the next five years, NYC parks will be building and refurbishing 82 public restrooms, including 28 new public restrooms in Manhattan. The city will also be establishing a joint task force to site and approve 14 new high-tech self-cleaning automated public toilets on city streets and plazas. The MTA has reopened dozens of public bathrooms temporarily closed during the pandemic, with at least 62 stations currently offering bathroom access to New Yorkers. We applaud these results and have been glad to partner with local agencies and Councilmember Rita Joseph, who we have partnered with on several pieces of legislation on public bathrooms. We still can do so much more. It is not enough to be building new public bathrooms, we also must be working to open up more existing bathrooms to the public. These efforts must start with city buildings, by opening city-run facility bathrooms to the city itself. Intro 0267-2024 would require the Department of Citywide Administration Services to work with the heads of all agencies managing or operating city facilities to identify and open every available bathroom to public use during each facility's operating hours, including ADA-accessible bathrooms. This bill would also require signage to identify each bathroom's location, hours, and accessibility for persons with disabilities. With these bathrooms' locations would be posted to a city website listing all public bathrooms in the city and including, included in a city land use list maintained by the Department of Citywide Administration Services. This won't solve our public restroom challenges by itself. More must be done to fix the current restroom stock, particularly to ensure that they are well-maintained and accessible to all New Yorkers. And we must push the MTA to open public restrooms underground and to make more digital signage and announcements on trains to ensure New Yorkers know public bathrooms. But we must, we must use every tool in our toolkit in this effort. I thank you for your consideration and look forward to working with the council and the administration to keep expanding access to public bathrooms and building a more equitable New York City for all of us.
Thank you very much for your testimony, and I just want to commend Borough President Levine for his leadership on this issue, and it's been noted and valuable, and we really appreciate it here in the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Allison Wilkie, and I'm testifying on behalf of both the Coalition for the Homeless and the Legal Aid Society, and also as part of the Free to Pee campaign. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this really important issue. I want to just make a few quick points here. You know, the Coalition for the Homeless in particular works with a lot of unsheltered people, and the need for public bathrooms is something that we have consistently heard for years. We did a report called A View from the Streets in 2021 where we surveyed 200 unsheltered New Yorkers, and the lack of public bathrooms was a challenge that was identified by so many people. And just the lengths that people go to, to try and find bathrooms throughout their day as they're trying to meet their other survival needs is really incredible and challenging for folks. No one wants to have to do their business in public, and none of us want people to have to do their business in public. But the fact is, is that that does happen, and the city's response right now is completely wrong-headed. From the mayor's management report that was just released on Monday, it showed that summonses from NYPD for public urination went up 46% from the last fiscal year, and those numbers have always been, or already been on the rise over the past couple of years. So it's an outrageous response that we're criminalizing people for a basic human need when we don't have the infrastructure that we need. And I don't want to bring us back to the trauma of the early days of the pandemic, but the fact is that there are some lessons that we should have learned from that. When many of the places the unsheltered people use bathrooms, like public libraries or businesses, shut down, people did not have a place to go. And our mobile food pantry was still out there giving people food, and every night we had people begging us for bathrooms and a place to wash their hands as just a matter of basic hygiene. And we pleaded with the city to provide bathrooms at that time, and those calls were not answered. And so from our own funds, the Coalition for the Homeless paid for some trailers and for attendance to disinfect bathrooms after every use as an emergency measure. And that was a short-term measure that we did, but it does show that if we take this seriously, we can mobilize and make sure that people have access to public bathrooms. So we really urge the council to pass Intro 694-267 alongside Intro 272 as a package to really just address the shameful lack of public bathrooms, and we look forward to working with the council more on this.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I'm Teddy Segal, and I'm the founder of Got2Go, a social media-based mission dedicated to sharing accessible bathroom locations. In the middle of Times Square in July 2021, I sipped the last of my iced coffee and realized I had to go. After several businesses turned me away, I burst into a McDonald's in tears, only to be told the bathroom was for customers only. I paid $3 for a bottle of water, ran up a flight of stairs, and found the door unlocked. I thought to myself, if only I had a resource that showed me where the closest bathroom was, I could have just gone in and used the toilet, saving my time, money, and anxiety. I took a video of the outside of the McDonald's and posted it on a TikTok account I created later that night, Got2Go NYC. I hope that sharing this information would offer relief to at least one other person. As of today, my crowdsourced bathroom map is Google's largest and most frequently used map in the world, having garnered thousands of locations and thousands of editors. My community has also grown. Today, there are over half a million people across all my social media platforms, and my content has reached over 100 million people. And while I am proud of my work, I'm not saying these numbers to brag, but to underscore the gravity of this issue. Got2Go was born out of a direct result of the city's failures. It's extremely alarming that sharing videos of accessible bathroom locations on TikTok would resonate with millions of people. I've learned from my Got2Go community that New York City's lack of public restrooms is not only a quality of life and public health issue, but it's an equity crisis. What might be considered an occasional nuisance for all New Yorkers is a pressing issue for many. In February of 2022, a man commented on my page, "I'm a big black guy who does deliveries at night. I don't even try at this point." Later that month, I received another comment. "I used your account when I was homeless. Thank you for real." Realizing that this is so much more than just bathrooms, I encouraged my community to submit their own bathroom struggles. A 44-year-old New York City resident with irritable bowel syndrome had to defecate between two parked cars on their morning commute. A homeless couple were denied the bathroom code to a cafe despite offering to buy something with their limited funds. A tourist from London witnessed her elderly friend wet herself. A trans man tore his pelvic floor due to holding it in for so long because the park bathroom stalls were missing doors. As a cisgender white woman, I'm aware of the inherent privilege that my appearance and orientation gives me. I can walk into most hotels and use their lobby bathroom without being questioned or told to leave. This is not the case for the majority of people who live in New York City. And this is New York City, the greatest city in the world. Why are we ranked 93rd in the nation when it comes to bathrooms per capita? Why was a 27-year-old New York City resident forced to bleed through her pants in a CVS while holding a box of tampons she bought, begging to use the restroom? Why did a 22-year-old camp counselor at Prospect Park have no choice but to change children in a bathroom where human feces was smeared on the floors and walls for days on end despite having reported it to the Parks Department? Why was a New York City school teacher left with no choice but to endure a humiliating accident in her car after being turned away from several businesses in search of a bathroom? This legislation package has the potential to positively impact the lives of every single person who lives in or travels to New York City. Because no matter who you are, where you're from, or what you believe in, everybody's got to go, and we all deserve the right to do so in peace. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, good morning, Chairman Wrestler and everyone else. My name is John Casetes. You said my name perfectly, by the way, so thank you for that. I'm a software engineer, and I am a co-founder and a CTO of a startup called P-Pass. We're new to the game. My team and I just launched a mobile app on the App Store dedicated to helping New Yorkers and visitors locate restrooms across the city. I'm here today to speak in strong support of the two proposed bills, both of which aim to address the critical issue of public restroom accessibility in New York. I'm going to sound like a broken record here, so bear with me. In my capacity as a co-founder, my team and I have conducted hundreds of interviews with a wide range of people across the city, residents, tourists, city workers, and those who simply enjoy spending time outdoors. Their stories mirror my own frustrations, as well as everyone else's frustrations, but they also provide a deeper insight into how these issues affect different communities in unique ways. We've all heard these stories before, and these stories and experiences led to the conception of P-Pass. We're doing things differently, trying to do things differently. We're an app that contains over 400 locations, crowdsourced, just like Got2Go, and managed by users of the platform. But it's not a Google Maps layer, it's not a Google Maps list of outdated information. It contains live data along with hours. Users can add reviews and ratings, as well as submit possible issues with restrooms. They can also add new restrooms along with photos to help users of the app locate them. And I think that if four people can build something like this in less than six months, then so can the city. The fact that residents have had to step in to create these tools highlight the severity of the problem. We're not a comprehensive and complete solution. This is not a problem that private apps or individuals can solve. It is fundamentally the city government's responsibility and obligation to provide adequate restroom access for its residents and visitors. I urge the city council to pass both of these bills. Bathrooms are not a luxury, they are a necessity, and they allow people to move freely through the city, to enjoy its public spaces, and to maintain their dignity and health. It is my hope that through these bills, New York can finally become a place where access to restrooms is no longer a source of stress or anxiety, but a basic service that everyone can rely on promoting the well-being of all of our residents and visitors. Thank you.
Thank you each for your testimony, and thank you for the work that you're doing and the advocacy that you're providing to help ensure that all New Yorkers have access to bathrooms. It's deeply, deeply appreciated. Your voices really matter, and hopefully will help move this package of legislation forward. So thank you for being here today. The next panel that we have up includes Willie Woods of the Open Hearts Initiative, Marnie Sumner of Columbia University, Marnie Summer, excuse me, Andrew Maroku, Rachel Simpson from Brooklyn, and Clifton Smith from the Bronx. Feel free to testify in whichever order you'd like. You each have three minutes.
My name is Clifton Smith, and I live in the Bx. So, so the reason why I came here was an important thing is that I always go, like, always a host of the bathroom, like, so, so I do live in a group home, and I, so I do, like, the reason why, because I have, I had one of my housemates pee on himself yesterday on my way to the, on our way to the appointments, and they couldn't hold it, and, well, we would say gay on the, on the van, and when, and then, and gay on the highway, on our way, they're coming, on our way to Mahala, he couldn't hold it. So, 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 so they had to go back, and so they had to go back to the house, change their house, change the clothes, got his wet clothes, that they pee, that they pee on themselves, which is not too good. So, the reason why, that they wet my, and then always, then, as for me, I wet my, always wet myself, wet myself, so I had to go back and change the clothes, and, change the clothes, and then put this clothes back, and take a shower, and then, and wash, wash these clothes that I pee on, that I pee on. Because, because the thing is, I'd be riding on a subway from home to Brooklyn, like, all the way to Coney Island, on my way, Coney Island. way to Coney Island, on my way to Coney Island. Because the thing is, because the bathrooms is closed at this time of night, and because always—because the thing is, I get home, because I'd be getting home at 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night. So, when there's no—so, if I couldn't hold it, I'm gonna have to hold it when I get home. And we do have public restrooms, but we do have public restroom in Van Corne Park, and on 242nd—and Van Corne Park, and 242nd Street. And we do—and we have one that opens then in Coney Island, and we—in the summertime, we have—bathroom opens—we have bathroom opens until 7:30, 8:00. So, I have opportunities to use it, and even though it doesn't, my staff—then, my point is—and then, my last point is that I—my staff asked me to not to have coffee, because that coffee is sort of—make me use the bathroom. And thank you guys for the time, and my time is out.
Well, I just want to thank you, Mr. Smith. That was really terrific testimony, and sharing your personal experience with friends, the challenges of not being able to access a bathroom, the harm that it causes when people don't have access to a bathroom, is very powerful. And you were able to tell a story that stretched from Coney Island to Van Cortlandt Park in Riverdale. You told the story of all of New York City, because all of us live somewhere between those two places. And your council member, Mr. Denowitz, was here earlier. He left a little bit ago, but I know that he's a big supporter of these efforts, and I'll let him know that his constituent was here and that you testified so eloquently, and I really appreciate you being here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And they need to increase the hours to 12:00 a.m. on the subway.
Yes.
Bathroom.
That's a very good point. It's—you know, the MTA unfortunately is not some—we don't get to control what the MTA does, but we can advocate, and we will, and I promise that we'll follow up with officials at the MTA to try and increase the hours for our subway bathrooms. So, thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Hate to have to follow that. That was so good. Thank you to the council for the opportunity to bring an academic program of research to bear on a pressing social issue. The pending legislation has begun the effort towards ensuring improved toilet access for all New Yorkers, and within that, the possibility of menstrual equity within the public space in New York City. However, we have much further to go. More importantly, New York has the opportunity to lead the country and much of the world on this issue. I'll speak to a significant gap that warrants immediate attention, requires minimal resources, and has the potential to transform New York City to a more gender-equitable urban context. First, the proposed two pieces of legislation, 694 and 267, are admirable for the expansion of public toilet accessibility that they will create both immediately and over the long term, and for the acknowledgement of gender aspects of relevance. However, the legislation ignores the urgent need for menstrual-friendly public toilet facilities for New York residents, tourists, and commuters. My team at Columbia University conducted a six-city global study in Barcelona, Campala, Manila, New York City, Osaka, and Rio de Janeiro. In each city, we conducted systematic audits of menstrual-friendly public toilets in business, tourist, and residential districts, including parks and transit depots. By menstrual-friendly, we mean a public toilet that is safe, clean, and accessible, but that also offers free or low-cost menstrual products and provides means for discreet disposal. And we have some design pictures we can leave with you, so in case you want to incorporate them. There should be appropriate signage, as the new legislation mandates, so a girl, woman, or anyone else who menstruates doesn't have to panic-search when it's time to change a pad or tampon. Our analysis, as you'll hear from my colleague next, has New York City falling well behind many of the other cities, including those in poorer countries, with respect to supply and quality of public toilets. We could lead the country on this issue if we put our minds to it, becoming a city that extends open arms to all who live, work, or visit here. Second, we are understandably hesitant to add to the already hefty burden of unmet public toilet need in New York. We get it, but there's a backstory here. It's called gender. As longtime New Yorker Gloria Steinem asked in the 1970s, "If men could menstruate, what would our world look like?" Or, to update her query for today's hearing, "If men were expected to manage their monthly blood flow while answering the urban call of commerce, education, public service, unpredictable work, or simple social assembly, we wouldn't be here today." Public toilets would not only be more accessible, cleaner, and safe, but they would also have menstrual products alongside the toilet paper, means for discreet disposal of used products, and mirrors to check for leaks and stains. There's a metric that we in public health have come increasingly to rely on as a vital index of full social participation. It's from the late 18th century, but its force is clear: the ability to appear in public without shame. My global team has premised its work in menstrual-friendly toilets on this principle as a bid for gender equity. It's one I think that the city council might well consider as it pursues this pressing issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And could you just state your name for the record?
Marnie Summer.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Andrew Maroku. I'm an associate professor at the Institute for Health Equity Research at the ICANN School of Medicine at Mount Sinai. Thanks so much for letting me talk a little bit. I'm going to say a little more about what Marnie was talking about with menstrual-friendly public toilets. First, there's broad agreement—I think everyone here agrees—that properly-designed and provisioned public toilets enable populations, including those who menstruate, the ability to move through public spaces and fully participate in public life. Bills 267 and 694 go a long way in beginning to address these unmet needs. And as Dr. Summer said, menstrual-friendly public toilets are accessible, safe, and clean, and fully serve the needs for those who menstruate. So, in our global study, we looked at different neighborhood types in the six cities that Dr. Summer mentioned, focusing on characteristics that would make these facilities menstrual-friendly. They include accessibility, privacy and safety, physical structure, cleanliness, availability of general resources, and availability of menstrual-health-specific resources. And I want to emphasize that these criteria are not just important for those who menstruate, but for everybody on the go in the city: working, raising kids, recreating, protesting, or pestering their city council representatives. Well-maintained public toilets are crucial staging elements in civic life. So, after auditing around 200 public toilet facilities, we found that overall, residential areas tended to be more severely under-resourced in terms of number of facilities than other neighborhood types, supporting 697, which, among other things, includes goals of ensuring a fair distribution of facilities. Excuse me. We think that's laudable, although it's always important to consider how you measure the geographic distribution to guarantee that all the populations and all neighborhoods are properly served. In our study, there were no neighborhood types—business, transit, tourist, or residential—that showed acceptable levels of menstrual-friendliness. Alarmingly, we also found that New York City scored lower than other high-income cities like Barcelona and Osaka in our study, meeting only around 70% of the basic menstrual-friendly criteria, barely a passing grade. And we didn't score that much higher than cities in low and middle-income countries in Brazil, Philippines, and Uganda, which have far fewer resources to work with. Gender equity is a fundamental gauge when designing, upgrading, siting, and constructing public restrooms. Accommodating the needs of such a large portion of our population shouldn't be ignored or an afterthought, but should be incorporated from the very beginning of the process. We have the opportunity to not just lead the country, but also the world in providing a basic service in a truly equitable manner. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, and thank you both for providing an academic perspective on this issue. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Chair Russler, for convening this hearing, and thank you for still being here to hear from us. My name is Willie Woods, and I'm an organizing intern for Open Hearts Initiative. I was homeless for over three years. I've been diagnosed with severe Crohn's disease over the last 10. I've been a member of the Free to Pee campaign since 2018 on one level or another. It's a cause that's near and dear to my heart. When I lived in Congret Shelter at the time, it was still like the major requirement that you had to leave your dorm during the day, which meant that you had to find a place to be, which meant that I didn't have access to a bathroom unless I stayed nearby the facility. I wasn't always working at the time, so I didn't have cash, and an EBT card wasn't necessarily the right item for a transaction that would get me into someplace to use a bathroom. It was just, you know, very anxiety-inducing. You know, what am I going to do? How am I going to do it? And what are people thinking about me while it's happening? I think we've all also seen, at least if we have access to a TV commercials for folks with Crohn's disease, and the through line is that all sufferers usually have urgent need for a bathroom. I'm here to state that that urgency can be overwhelming, to the point where your body takes over, and you don't have a choice. You have to go to a bathroom. You have to have access to a bathroom. In fact, when I have a Crohn's flare, I really can't plan my travel from destination to destination. I have to plan my travel from bathroom to bathroom, you know? And unfortunately, when we're not able to find public bathrooms, our choices are limited. You know, I've had my body betray me more than once. I've had to relieve myself on the street in risk of summons. I've had to make my way through a discount store trying to discreetly purchase new clothing while smelling of human waste. I've been stuck on a train, bargaining with God to let me get one more stop. You know, not to mention, you know, the heartbreak of actually finding a bathroom, but then it's inadequate supply, or it's closed, or, you know, I'm by Bryant Park and the line is going around the block. You know, it's just one of those things. It's an incredible level of embarrassment trying to explain to your supervisor via text while you're going to be late or you need to miss a shift because you're having another Roger malfunction. It's just frankly, in 2024, no one should have to experience that kind of indignity. And it's time to hopefully be able to pass, you know, pass these bills as a package. Thank you.
Mr. Woods, I just have to say, I feel like your testimony succinctly captured why this package is so urgently important, and I could not imagine it being better said. And I deeply appreciate you coming here to share your experience. It is—it's right, people have medical conditions, people may have not—don't have other options of places to go, and it is, as you said, anxiety-producing, embarrassing. It is for the individual and is shameful for us as a society to not provide universal, free bathroom access in a convenient way to every single New Yorker. And I just want to say how much I personally deeply appreciate you coming today to share your words and your perspective. It was incredibly powerful. And thank you for your work with Open Hearts Initiative. It's a special place, so have a great day to all of you. Thank you for joining this panel. We really, really appreciate it. And I'm assuming that Rachel Simpson has left us, even though she lives very close to the 33rd Council District, but just outside of it. Great. We are now going to switch gears to Roosevelt Island. I would like to invite Paul Crickler, Margie Smith, and Joyce Short to each come up to the panel to testify. And I just would like to let the folks on Zoom know whom are patiently waiting, that once we make through our in-person witnesses, we will shift to a Zoom panel. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Russler. My name is Paul Crickler. I live on Roosevelt Island. I'm asking the committee you to support Resolution 0132 from Councilmember Menon. I'm here representing 1,100 people who signed a petition that we started about a year ago, and the significance of that is we have 12,000 people who live on Roosevelt Island. It's a significant proportion of the island who got involved with this. People care about this deeply and broadly on the island. What this petition calls for is democracy on the island, direct election of the board members of the Roosevelt Island Operating Corporation. We want two things that come from that: better oversight and better involvement in how the place is run. I'm going to let Margie and Joyce talk about the decades of experience they've had more than I have, but to put it briefly, over the decades, there've been many long periods where there's been a terrible relationship between RIOC, the people who run the island, and the residents. In those circumstances, what you would hope for is the board would provide oversight and some way of healing that, and it hasn't happened. We've had terrible relations and no real oversight by the board. So, we're calling for direct election by the residents—unusual concept, I know—democracy of Roosevelt Island. So, I'm going to leave it there. We've got a huge amount of support from the island. Let me turn it over to Margie first.
Oh. Double. I think I just need one. Thank you very much for having us. My name is Margie Smith. I've lived on Roosevelt Island since 1977. I was a member of the RIOC Board of Directors. My four-year term went for eight years, and I said, you know, "It's not the Supreme Court. I shouldn't still be here." I was a mayoral appointee, so when I got called by the mayor's office to sit on the board, I said, "I've been fighting for democracy for 12 years. I can't just accept a position that's handed to me." So, we held a mock election, and New York State wouldn't even let us call it an election. We had to call it a plebiscite. But anyway, ran, won, everything was fine. But I can't believe I'm here today in the United States of America, making the case that we should be able to vote for our immediate level of governance. Everybody tells us, "Well, you already have that. You can vote for your city council member. You can vote for your mayor." So, you do. But we do. We do vote for them. The difference is, when everybody else in New York goes in and pulls that lever, they're voting for somebody who is answerable to them. If you agree with what they're doing, you vote for them again next year. If you don't, you vote them out. These are the same people that decide how your tax dollars are spent. They make your land use decision. They describe—they decide on the issues that dramatically affect your quality of life, but not on Roosevelt Island. We vote for all of you guys, but you don't make decisions on what happens to Roosevelt Island. The RIOC Board of Directors is our city council, yet we cannot vote for them. They decide on these issues, and they're all appointed. Just the issue today about public restrooms. You guys will go away, you'll vote on it, you'll agree we should have them. You've got no authority on Roosevelt Island to do anything. And we feel like we've had that level of government taken away. And when they do put these people in, not only cannot vote them out, some of them have been on for 10 years, 15—there is one guy on for 30 years who calls in. We don't even know where he's living anymore. And these are the people who are spending our money. And to add insult to injury, we pay ground rent because we don't own the land, and on top of that, we pay taxes for land that we don't own, and then we don't get to decide how it's spent. Our money—we have to repair our own roads, we repair the tram, we repair the seawall, the land, but we get no city funding, we get no state funding, yet we have no authority on how any of this money is spent or what we want the people on the island to do. So, I'm asking you to support this bill, and I want to thank Julie Menon for bringing it up, but I know you don't have the authority to do anything. You can recommend, suggest, urge. Great, that's what we're trying to get rid of. We want the authority to tell our government what we want them to do. I'll turn it over to Joyce with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margie. Well said. And thank you, Chair Russler, and members of the committee. I'm Joyce Short. I'm a 49-year resident of Roosevelt Island, and I've served on just about every resident board that's elected by our population, because I've refused to serve on the RIOC board because it's not elected. I'll start with the obvious. Roosevelt Island is a landmass in New York City, but it's leased by the city to the state of New York until 2068. So, the state is New York City's tenant. When a building owner has a problem with the tenant, they step in to fix it. And that's what Roosevelt Islanders are asking you to do today. As the landlord for Roosevelt Island, the community is asking you to stop the state, your tenant, from committing a serious crime against us. Article 4, Section 4 of the Constitution of the United States ensures government as a republic throughout our nation. To simplify James Madison's concept of a republic, it's one in where government is elected and people serve for specific terms. Can you imagine if you served in your capacity in city council with no concern as to whether you'd be voted out of office in the next election? You would have no reason to consider the interest of your constituents. Being able to vote you into office is only representative of government if your constituents can also vote you out of office. Now imagine if you were appointed to the office instead of elected to office, and that's exactly how Roosevelt Island is governed. One of the many roles in the community that I've held has been to run the referendums, also called plebiscites, to identify who the community wants as RIOC directors. Our votes only serve as a request, which the governor can implement or ignore. In the five referendum that our community conducted, only the first, under Governor Patterson's administration, led to actual appointments. In fact, the last referendum included not only new faces who vied—do I not have a—I don't have a mic. Okay. Okay. Yeah. The—in the five referendum that our community conducted, only the first, in Governor David Patterson's administration, led to actual appointments. In fact, the last referendum included not only new faces who vied for the community's approval, but also the directors who were serving on the RIOC board at the time. The community voted their preference— The community voted their preference. No one who the community supported was appointed. Sorry. At the time, the governor had not even seen fit to fill several vacant seats, and the two current directors hardly received a vote, yet they still serve on the board today. Because RIOC is largely a real estate management business, they're particularly consumed by making Roosevelt Island appear to be crime-free, because crime stats impact real estate, and crime does not get treated appropriately on Roosevelt Island. We are, Roosevelt Island stands as a blatant example of why our forefathers insisted on a republican form of government for our nation, including Roosevelt Island. As the landlord for Roosevelt Island, please address the oppressive form of government that regulates, regulates the lives of the 12,000 people who live there. We need your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Short, and Ms. Smith, and Mr. Crickler for your impassioned testimony. I do want to recognize my good friend and colleague, Councilmember Schulman, for joining us today, and I want to thank Councilmember Menon for submitting this resolution. So I just was a little confused, forgive my ignorance, in I believe Ms. Smith's testimony, you mentioned five board members. The RIOC website indicates nine?
Nine.
Nine, nine.
Nine.
Sorry.
All appointed by the governor, two by virtue of their position in New York State, Director of the Budget and the head of HCR.
Got it.
And then two recommendations of the mayor.
Two by nature of their position in charge of DOB and HCR, two at the recommendation of the mayor, and then five other appointments.
By the governor.
Of the current nine, do any live on Roosevelt Island?
Yes.
And is there any requirement that a certain number of them?
Yes, there is. There's a requirement that the majority live on Roosevelt Island. Five have to live on Roosevelt Island.
And, and the, I certainly-
But they're not elected.
They're not elected.
Oh, of course, they're not elected. But I, and I certainly appreciate the spirit of this resolution and support it, and think having, you all should have a say in who is a part of the governing body of the place that you live. There's no question about it. But just for my edification, five of the nine people are residents, and is there any mechanism for them to kind of get feedback from their neighbors, or do you work with them collaboratively to help ensure that they are good stewards of the island?
No, they don't work with us.
We, we try. Some of them, the one there that's been there for 30 years, they want to stay on the board for some reason. They're afraid of getting Albany mad. So you get these big speeches about, we're considering this, that, or the other thing, and we understand it's not good for the island, blah, 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 blah. But how do you vote? Whatever way the governor says, because I don't want to get thrown off the board. And they know there's nothing we can do about it.
Wow.
They don't all work like that, but I'm saying, it doesn't take long to get the majority to both the way the governor wants.
And the ones that, and the ones that don't go along get outvoted by the ones that do. In other words, if there's only three votes that are positive for the community, there'll be six votes that are consistent with the, what they perceive to be the state's position.
Just one more quickie, too. They don't pay very much attention to the term limits. However, if the governor doesn't like the way somebody is voting, that person will get thanked off the board, while other members who have been there 10 times longer will remain on the board.
Right.
And the answer will be, well, this term was up.
I'd like to add one concept, if you mind, if you don't mind.
Sure.
And that is that neither the state of New York nor the city of New York provides any funding to a $30 million budget that operates Roosevelt Island. All of that money comes from the residents of Roosevelt Island. It's basically like taxation without representation. We need representation, and we're hoping that you'll exercise your muscle to give us that representation.
Well, I just want to thank you all for joining us today. Thank you for your thoughtful testimony. We're very happy to hear this resolution. As you noted, resolutions are kind of the spirit of the body in the council, and I hope that Councilmember Menon will be able to help shepherd this resolution through the council. You certainly have my support, and hopefully our colleagues in Albany will heed the recommendations of this council. So thank you for making the time today. Thank you for your smart and thoughtful testimony. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Come visit us sometime.
I've been before, I would be, there is, I think that the Four Freedoms Park is one of the most spectacular locations in the city of New York.
And Nellie Bligh is at the other end. Nobody ever goes to the other end with a pass.
All right, next time I'll go to the other end.
Go to the other end.
Thank you both.
Bye-bye.
Yeah. My favorite. Okay, we're gonna do one more in-person panel. Mr. Darrell Holmes from the Bronx, Perina Gold. Oh, great, thank you. Christopher Leon Johnson, and then I don't know if they're actually here, but they registered in advance, Mercedes Hesselroth and Rebecca Tama. And I will just apologize again for any names which I have mangled. Thank you for joining us. Please feel free to start.
You go.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, council members and committee members. My name is Penina Gold. I was born in New York. I've been living in New York City for the past 17 years, four of which in Roosevelt Island. I want to concur with everything my neighbors said, who just spoke before me, Paul, Margie, and Joyce. Many of us have heard the phrase, no taxation without representation, or taxation without representation, but we usually hear it in the context of the Revolutionary War, or as Washington, this is slogan, but not about New York City in 21st century. In New York City, we tend to take it for granted that we have a local government that is accountable to its constituents, at least in theory. However, those of us who are lucky enough to call Roosevelt Island home do not have that luxury. We are approximately 12,000 New Yorker, New York City residents, who, if we're eligible, get to vote for the mayor, our city council representatives, Manhattan Borough President, DA, judges, as well as representatives for state and federal government, just like any other Manhattanite. However, we do not have a vote on who runs and maintains the beautiful island we call home. Roosevelt Island Operating Corporation, shortly known as RIOC, is responsible for most aspects of our shared lives and shared resources, but that agency is not accountable to us, its residents, whom it impacts the most. The president of RIOC, which we currently don't even have one, that's a different conversation. He's appointed by the governor, and the, and he's barely accountable to her, especially if the appointment was done by a former governor. RIOC's president is accountable to the RIOC Board of Directors, which you heard earlier, they're only appointed by the governor or the mayor. And only thanks to the efforts of residents over the years were we able to get a tiny concession that some of the RIOC Board of Directors be residents of the island, as you heard earlier. So at least we can count on some of them that they, that they be part of the community. But again, like you heard from Ms. Short, they have other, they're not accountable to us. And therefore, you know, we can hopefully understand that the few residents can understand the action or inaction when they make decisions, but at the end of the day, they are not accountable to us. Ideally, Roosevelt Island residents should get to vote for both the RIOC president and for the whole RIOC Board of Directors. That would be the democratic way to do things. I understand that we do not live in an ideal world, so voting for the Board of Directors would be a good start. And I applaud our council member, Julie Menon, for bringing this resolution to the table. It is important to remember, however, that this is not even a binding resolution. It's a resolution that calls upon the state legislature to pass and for the governor to sign a law for us to have some accountability to our very local government agency. For the sake of democracy and accountability, I urge all council members to vote for Resolution 0132-2024, and by extension, I urge all members of the New York State Assembly, New York State Senate, and the governor to pass and sign this law to let Roosevelt Islanders have a say on the one government agency that runs our public life. To summarize it in four words, let my people vote. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Wrestler. My name is Christopher Leon Johnson on the record, but, so I know this is the Roosevelt Island part, I just came late.
So just to clarify, this, this hearing is not related to idling?
All right, cool. So, but I, I agree with this guy with Roosevelt Island. Why are the people in Roosevelt Island not able to vote for their own board? If they live there, which is one of the most expensive districts in the, in the borough in Manhattan, I think it should be in Queens. Queens get the money. They should be able to vote for their board. I think every neighbor should vote for their board, especially Roosevelt Island. So I want to get this clear about this, first thing about the bike storage. This is the thing, right? We need this in everywhere, but the problem is that we need more transparency of how this is gonna be installed. And because you could put it there where you want, but if you only let, who is gonna be for the employees or the public? This is the question. If you don't have this here, then it's no point. Now, the second thing about the bathrooms, I know this is a big topic about the bathrooms, since I have two minutes left, I'm gonna talk about this, right? Now, there are certain places in the city, right, right here, this is a city facility that we could actually use the bathroom, but the big problem is that, I think you, Chair Wrestler, I don't know if DCAST was here, or Mr. Molina, you should ask, have another hearing about this and ask him, like, why does he allow the DCAST police to decide of who gets to use, like, can he lock the bathrooms and stuff like that? And that's the problem, is that you can have it all you want, but if you allow the DCAST police to lock the bathrooms, it just, it's just ridiculous. And the problem is that nobody's gonna fight a cop. They still, they still peace officers, but it's just, the thing is, like, they allowed this to happen. So like I said, you have to have another hearing with Mr. Molina, why he wasn't here? Was he here today? I don't know, why he wasn't here? Mr. Molina wasn't here.
His deputy executive commissioner was here, who oversees real estate and, and-
Yeah.
So he, she was the right person to testify to the issues. We were pleased with their testimony.
Yeah, I understand, but it's just one thing that, like, that needs to start happening more, is like, who gets to decide, who gets to lock the bathrooms to the public? Anytime you go in a public restroom, like, in a city, in a city, almost like, oh, it's not open. Like, what do you mean it's not open? Like, you have a, you have a staff you pay good money to to fix these bathrooms, why, why it's not open? I think it's because they don't want, they don't want people going there and using it all the time. So it's one thing we gotta fix in this city, we gotta fix this, like, this bureaucracy crap that they do with the bathrooms. And one more thing to end this all with, with the letter X. I stand my trans community, I don't know, this is 2024, I don't know why that the last city council didn't think of this before, of putting the X on applications. If you want to identify yourself as transgender, then feel free. You should be able to identify yourself as a trans, transgender. I mean, there's more than one gender now, so let me make that, let me get off here. Five seconds left.
I want to commend you for commenting on so many bills in just three minutes.
Yeah.
It was very impressive, and I appreciate the thoughtful testimony, and I really want to echo your sentiments around the DCAST police, that, you know, we need to make sure that our public buildings are accessible to the public, and I agree, we've seen, I've seen arbitrary actions by DCAST police in the past of who can get in where and why, and, and I think that the legislation that Councilmember Joseph sponsored today would really help address it. So thank you for your testimony. We appreciate you both being here. I hope you both have a wonderful afternoon.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Enjoy your day.
You too. And then our final panel of the day on Zoom, we are gonna hear from Ms. Amanda Brown, Ms. Kathy Cross, Mbake Tiam, and James Staris. Apologies in advance for any names that I may have mangled. You each have three minutes. Why don't, since we're on Zoom, I'll just call them out. Why don't we start with Ms. Brown?
Good afternoon. I will take much less than three minutes of your time, but thank you for being here today, and thank you to Julie Menon for your support of Resolution 0132. I've lived on Roosevelt Island for eight years, and I support this resolution. Roosevelt Island is a wonderful place to live and raise a family. I have two young children in our excellent public school, PSI is 217. I'm the co-president of the PTA, and I serve on my co-op board. I'm highly involved in the island, and I work hard to make it the best it can be. Watching RIOC and the residents constantly disagree over priorities for the island and feeling powerless to sway the board's interest and focus is incredibly frustrating. Direct elections would allow residents to have input, to prioritize the issues that affect us the most, and to voice our opinions with our vote. We live in a representative democracy, as many of us have said, and we vote for all those who hold sway over our communities, with the exception of the RIOC Board of Directors. I hope the time has come for change, and appreciate your support of Resolution 0132, so we can continue to have this wonderful island be an idyllic place for families, for senior citizens, for all the many people that call it home, and so we can influence what goes on here. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that succinct and compelling testimony. We appreciate you being with us. Next up, Kathy Cross.
You may begin.
Hello.
Ms. Cross, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I really wanted to let you know that we've lived here, myself and my family and my extended family have lived here for 36 years. It's a wonderful place to live, but during those 36 years, we have been ignored by the people who run the island. And sadly, people get hurt because that is happening. So it's important to me that everyone on the island have a say, all of the 12,000 people who live here have an opportunity to vote and express how they feel about various issues that are quality of life and very important. I'm gonna keep this short. I just want you to know that I think I represent a lot of the, I'm obviously a senior citizen, and I represent a lot of the people who, after many years of being ignored, feel it's time to have a say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cross, for your eloquent and thoughtful testimony. You don't compare to, you've got a ways to go to catch up with some of the earlier witnesses we had. Ms. Smith and Ms. Short each had, I think, over 40 years on Roosevelt Island, so you've got to, but you'll get there soon enough.
Hopefully, I'll get there, yes.
There you go. But certainly a longtime resident and appreciate your perspective. Why don't we do one more on Roosevelt Island, and then we'll, Mr. James Staris.
You may begin.
Yes, thank you very much for hearing us on this issue. I absolutely concur with what Amanda Brown had stated earlier. And, you know, as a person, my family, we're raising children on the island now. We've been here for 14 years. We do love living here. It's a wonderful and unique neighborhood. The only real drawback with having board members from the island, not a drawback, it's wonderful, it's just the drawback that we can't elect them ourselves, and they get appointed by the head of RIOC and by the governor. And so if we were given the opportunity to have those members elected, we ourselves would know which members of the community are up to date and really locked and keyed in with the issues that we are being affected by. And they could run the gamut from issues on sports field, issues on, on clean streets, on tram issues, you know, it could be like any other community issues. And I think it's very frustrating that the neighborhood has repeatedly asked and wishes for the right to elect those members to the board based on what the community members themselves who live here would like to run on and represent our neighborhood and community, those policies and those issues they wish to bring to the RIOC board. And I think it's very simple, and I will also be very short with my testimony, but I think it's clear, and I think it would benefit the whole community and actually make working together much easier and much more pleasant. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Staris. And as the final witness of the day, Mbake Tiam from CIDNY.
You may begin.
Can I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, and we can see you too.
Hello, my name is Mbake Tiam. I'm the housing and health community organizer, Center for Independence of the Disabled in New York. We advocate for people with disabilities in the five boroughs of New York City. It's a pleasure for me today to join Councilmember Lincoln Wrestler and Councilmember Gail Brewer and everyone on the table in order to implement change regarding city legislation. And I wanted to show our support here at Sydney for a few legislation, in 162 for bicycle storage in city building, also public bathroom availability, which is intro to 67. Sydney supports the introduction of bike racks in the city building as well to promote sustainable transportation and reduce traffic congestion. However, it is critical that in implementing this storage solution, we ensure there is adequate sidewalk clearance for people with disabilities who use mobility device such as wheelchair or walker. Sidewalk must remain accessible and navigable for all New Yorkers. We cannot allow bicycle infrastructure to compromise the safety and accessibility of the street for people with disabilities. In 267, public bathroom availability, the lack of public restroom across NYC is a pressuring issue, especially for people with disabilities. Sydney fully support making more bathroom in NYC facilities available for public use. This measure will obviously increase access to much-needed restroom, but will also help keep subway elevators clean, since many subway elevators are being misused as bathroom, rendered them unusable for people with disability. Providing more public restroom will improve public health and cleanliness and accessibility in our transit system. I just want to mention that this testimony was written along with my colleague, Anna Humphrey and Molly, in order to, to let us hear and make people with disability hear. Also, we support intro for 78, one, agency providing emergency information to community-based organization in language other than English. People with disability face often dis- People with disability face often disproportionate barriers during emergency situation because many of things most impacted by emergencies, example, access to transportation, healthcare, food, clean hair, shelter, et cetera, already often requires additional preparation and accommodation for them to access them equally, equitably. Language access should not be on additional barriers. Sydney therefore supports the passage of this bill, as it will help ensure that people with disability have more access to the import, the information and resources they need as they navigate the situations. We also support 587, 311, customer satisfaction survey and agency report cards. New Yorkers deserve to know what actions are being, sorry, New Yorkers deserve to know what actions are being taken when they submit complaints through the 311 system. Too often, people feel that their concern are ignored after making their reports. This proposed initiative of conducting customer satisfaction survey and publishing agency report cards will hold city agencies accountable and ensure that residents, including those with disabilities, receive timely and effective response to their complaints. This transparency is essential to restoring trust between the public and the city. We also support 694, with councilmember Nas, long-term citywide bathroom strategy. So Sydney strongly support the development of a long-term citywide bathroom strategy, including maintaining public restroom and providing a map to help residents and visitors locate them. This would be a significant step forward for accessibility, making it easier for people with disabilities to find restroom when they need it. We also support Intro 191, which is a two-years notice of lease expiration. So we strongly support that amending the administrative code of the City of New York in relation to requiring the Department of Citywide Administrative Services to give, to provide tenants of the city, of city lease properties, two-years notice of lease expiration. I think, we also provide, we also support Intro 744, which is duplicate 311 requests for service and complaint. Addressing duplicate 311 requests is important for improving the efficiency of the city services. However, it is equally important that each issue is addressed on an individual basis to ensure no one feels ignored. Multiple issues at a single location should be treated with the same urgency and toughness as separate complaints. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to testify. It was a pleasure to, I will submit a return testimony for the record.
We really appreciate your thoughtful testimony and always the Center for Independence of the Disabled, really great advocacy on behalf of New Yorkers of all abilities. And I think your perspective on the bathroom bills was really meaningful, and we appreciate you taking the time and your patience as the final witness in our hearing today. So I just want to thank you for being here. I want to thank the community from Roosevelt Island for taking the time and for your cogent and compelling advocacy for more democracy on Roosevelt Island. And just want to thank everybody for taking the time to be here today, and just once again, our team from Central Staff and from my office for your hard work in making all this happen. Oh, I have to say something official. I can just close out. So with that, we're going to close out the hearing. Thank you so much, and have a great day.